City Council Public Hearing will now be called to order, Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadeen.
Here.
Joseph Kamara.
Here.
Stephen Kamara.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
Valerie LeBeau.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Pelletier.
Here.
Bavaris.
Here.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person who makes an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium, attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed to acknowledge and permissible. Before I acknowledge our joint meeting with the School Committee and City Council we have at 5:25, public hearings, we're going to go through those right now and then we can go to that jointly scheduled meeting. That first item is curb removal. Robert Plord and Kerry Jaraback of 1031 High Street request the removal of an additional 16 feet of curbing to the existing 23-foot driveway opening on the north side of the property facing President Avenue.
Will the hearing be opened?
Motion to open the public hearings made by Counselor Kamara, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Is there any proponents wishing to speak on this item, calling all proponents? Hearing none. Is there any opponents wishing to speak on this item, calling all opponents? Hearing none.
Motion to close.
Motion to close the public hearings made by Counselor Kilby. Counselor in seat three, Counselor Kamara.
Just prior to that, though, I believe there has been a letter of opposition registered, I'd just like to have that listed and registered as part of the public hearing.
Madam Clerk.
We do have that.
We do have what? Can you indicate that to the council?
It should be on all councilor's desks.
Yep, okay. The councilors all have it. Fair enough.
So it's now part of the record.
Motion to close the public hearing has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next item is John Vincent and Michael McHenry of 763 Oak Grove Avenue for the removal of curbing. The petitioners would like to remove the curbing at an existing paved driveway on Bond Street on the north side of their multifamily residence that also has an existing driveway opening on the west side of the property facing Oak Grove Avenue. The curb removal would correct the existing condition wherein the residents are driving over an exposed curb. Is there a motion to open?
Motion to open.
Motion to open the public hearings made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Long, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, calling all proponents wishing to speak on this item, calling all proponents. Okay. Proponent or opponent? Madam Clerk, can you indicate the proponent that you received in writing?
Yes, I received a communication from the neighbor of this property and he just wanted to make the council aware that he is in complete support of this request.
Any further proponents wishing to speak on this? Hearing none. Any opponents wishing to speak on this item, calling all opponents?
Motion to close.
Motion to close the public hearings made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Long, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Item three, Carl Machado, trustee of 205 High Street, for the removal of curbing. The petitioners requesting a 12-foot driveway opening on the north side of the property facing Bank Street and would like to extend the driveway an additional 12 feet to the west to improve off-street parking access and provide two additional off-street parking spaces. The proposed work improves access to the property and does not cause significant adverse effect on on-street parking in the area.
Motion open.
Motion open, the hearing's been made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, calling all proponents wishing to speak on this item, calling all proponents. Hearing none, calling all opponents wishing to speak on this item, all opponents? Madam Clerk, anything? Hearing none, motion to close.
Motion to close.
Motion to close the public hearings made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Secondhand article store Wayne Confoy doing business as Cash for Gold at 745 Broadway Street, Fall River, for permission to operate and maintain a secondhand article store located at 1503 Pleasant Street. Is there a motion to open? Motion to open, the hearings been made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Any proponents wishing to speak on this item? Calling all proponents. Hearing none. Any opponents wishing to speak on this item, calling all opponents? Madam Clerk, anything in the record? Hearing none. There's a motion to close.
Motion to close.
Motion to close, the hearings been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Long, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. And number five, storage licenses. Coleba Enterprises LLC at 2050 Plainfield Pike, Grantsville, Rhode Island, for permission to store 24,000 gallons of unleaded super gasoline and 6,000 gallons of diesel fuel for a total of 30,000 gallons underground, 30,000 gallons underground, a decrease of 2,000 gallons at 372 Plymouth Avenue on Lot I-1910 Assessor's Plan. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
Motion open.
Motion open, the hearings been made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Any proponents wishing to speak on this item? Calling all proponents. Hearing none, any opponents wishing to speak on this item, calling all opponents. Hearing none, is there a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close.
Motion to close, the hearings been made by Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Counselor Long, all those in favor?
Right.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Item six, our final one, is Christie Realty Limited Partnership, Old Northeast Realty LLC at 22 Christie Drive in Brockton, Mass., for permission to store 25,000 gallons of gasoline and 5,000 gallons of diesel fuel for a total of 30,000 gallons underground at 340 Millikan Boulevard on Lot N-25-3 Assessor's Plan. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
Motion open.
Has been made by Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Counselor Long, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Is there any proponents wishing to speak on this item, calling all proponents? Hearing none, any opponents wishing to speak on this item, calling all opponents? Hearing none. Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
Is this a new station coming in, is that?
Madam Clerk, do you have that?
It is new.
It existed years previously, but they haven't operated at that location.
And number five, is that a new one as well?
No, that one's just a change in the amount of storage.
It's decreasing by 2,000 gallons, item five.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Is there a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close.
Motion to close, the hearings been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, we adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. This four-over city council joint meeting with the School Committee is now be called to order, Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadeen.
Here.
Joseph Kamara.
Here.
Stephen Kamara. Kilby.
Here.
Valerie LeBeau.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Pelletier.
Here.
Bavaris.
Here.
President Ponce.
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person who makes an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium, attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed to acknowledge and permissible. First item on our agenda will be citizens' input. At that point, actually, at this point now, I'm going to turn the floor over to the mayor, Mr. Mayor. You can do your roll call and then we'll do the roll call.
Thank you, Mr. President. The joint meeting of the City Council and the School Committee will come to order. I'll call the roll for the School Committee.
Mr. Agia.
Here.
Mr. Fugian.
Here.
Mr. Costa.
Here.
Mr. Hetzel.
Here.
Mr. Corey.
Here.
Mr. Martin. Here, correct.
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person who makes an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium, attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and deemed to acknowledge and permissible. I'll turn it back over to the City Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First person to sign up to speak is Sarah Riley at 1679 Copacoot Road regarding transportation.
I'm sorry, I just ran in, so I'm still short of breath. Before you guys make a decision on the transportation budget, I want you to understand how it's already affecting children in the school system. I have a five-year-old with ADHD and anxiety disorder and he gets on the bus at 6:10 in the morning. He's arriving to his school at 7:25, sorry, 7 o'clock when his school, the Sylvia School starts at 7:25. He has to wake at 5:45 in the morning. He already has sleep disorder, so he's already compromised in terms of sleep. But in the morning, it's my job as parent to prepare him for life. It's my job to teach him how to tie his shoes and how to brush his teeth and it's my job to teach him how to have autonomy and I can't do that at 5:45 in the morning. Transportation is doing their very best to meet the needs that we've been advocating for for the last year, but they just don't have the funding as it stands right now. Comparably, the Dartmouth Bus, which is two miles down the road from us, comes two hours later in the day. Mondays, he's home at 3:10, but Tuesdays through Fridays, he's not home until 4:35 or 4:45. So there's no time for outdoor playing, he can't get to extracurricular activities, there's no time for homework. It's dinner, bath time and bedtime at 7:30. I have literally no time for anything, except I have a two-and-a-half-year-old and two-and-a-half-year-olds don't play by games, but they play by their own games and their own rules. And I have a really hard time getting him to sleep because he has such high cortisol levels from being roused at 5:45 in the morning with his brother that sleep is becoming a real problem. In fact, behavior is becoming a real problem for us. His preschool teacher has concerns. I'm doing the very best that I can, but I'm basically struggling between an hour every evening trying to keep my toddler quiet so that his brother can sleep, so that he can function in school. And every morning, doing my best to stop my toddler from rousing early so that he is not aggressive and angry and hitting and just generally very moody for the rest of the day and problematic for everyone. For a two-year-old, the National Sleep Foundation recommends an average of 11 to 14 hours of sleep daily, with up to 15, 16 hours. But his developing brain gets less than 10 hours. For Sam, the National Sleep Foundation, based on the age of five, recommends an average of 10 to 13 hours of sleep with up to 14 hours, but his developing brain also gets less than 10 hours because of the funding limits of transportation as they stand right now. He already has the attention deficit and corresponding anxiety. I think we're very lucky that we've got incredible kindergarten teachers, but I worry about what's going to happen in the first grade, what's going to happen in the second grade, what's going to happen in the third and fourth grade, because this is unsustainable. We've been doing this for seven months and it is unsustainable for me and for my family. It creates so much stress and it's projected on the kids and it's impacting everyone's health. Everyone's getting sick every six weeks. I'm out of my mind, really trying to provide the best that I can for my kids, but it's an impossible situation. And it's wildly unnecessary because his bus arrives 25 minutes earlier than school doors even open at the school. But they're transporting the middle school kids, so they're trying to get the elementary to the elementary school and then take the middle school kids and try to get them on time to middle school. If transportation had the funding that it needed, then the kids wouldn't have to be waiting 25 minutes before school doors even open. The Fall River Schools, it's busing kids right now purely based on the literal letter of Massachusetts state law, but the policy is really in gross conflict with the recommendations of the American Academy of Pediatrics, the National Sleep Foundation, the American Academy of Sleep Medicine, the American Medical Association and the CDC. We need to consider, as it stands with the funding that we have right now, audit on transportation to make sure that we're not failing any of these kids. This isn't about equity to access for education, it's about equity to a child's ability for learning. We're looking at ADHD, anxiety, depression, forgetfulness, aggression, cognitive problems. We're looking at childhood obesity, tendency towards substance abuse, heart disease and more. I'm advocating for better transportation funding for a year now. I only ask that you consider what's in the best interest of the children in your school system. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me.
Counselor in seat five, Counselor Vice President LeBeau.
Ms. Riley, did you say he was five?
He's five.
And he gets on the bus at 6:10?
6:10 a.m.
And he's on the bus for an hour?
The bus arrives at school at 7 o'clock, so he's not on the bus for an hour. He meets the state standards of less than an hour.
Fifty minutes.
But it's 50 minutes because our bus goes from Copacoot to the Blossom Road area and it's 25 minutes to Blossom Road and then it's another 25 minutes to the school from the Blossom Road and I don't know who they pick up in the meantime.
So a five-year-old is on the bus at 6:10 in the morning?
6:10 in the morning.
Okay. I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Hearing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so this is the first time we've ever, probably at least in a long time, that the City Council and School Committee has conducted a joint meeting of its both bodies. Had a long conversation this afternoon with the mayor and how we're going to go about doing this to ensure that we're organized and straightforward with this is that we're going to invite members of the administration down, as well as the school finance team and the superintendent to the table. They are going to give their presentation before the City Council and School Committee. At that time, after they are done, we're going to entertain questions from the City Council first, which I preside over. At that point, once the City Council is done asking their questions of both the School Department and the city's finance team, I'll turn it over to the mayor, who will be chairing his school department side of the budget or deliberations. He'll be entertaining questions from his school committee men and at that point, if there are any other questions that are necessary, well, as the two chairs of the committee we are, we'll identify the individuals assigned up to speak and move forward that way. At that point, we'll adjourn the meeting once we are done. But at this point, there's a presentation from the administration totaling probably about 15 to 20 minutes or thereabouts, I'm told. And then once it's done, we'll entertain councilors' questions and if any of the bodies have questions for each other, like if a city councilor has a question for a school committee man, or if a school committee man has a question for the city council, for example, if Counselor Long has a question for somebody on the school committee, he'll just have to go through the chair and I'll identify the mayor, who can identify his school committee people. Any questions? Good. Madam City Administrator, Mrs. Sahadi.
Just give a brief opening. Thank you, City Council President. Thank you to the members of our City Council, as well as my colleagues here on the School Committee, as well as the joint administrations. Tonight's purpose and we're going to do the best job we can, of course, as the first ones, we're setting a precedent, as per the Charter's requirement to give a review of the fiscal and financial condition of the city, general fund, revenue and expenditure forecasts and other relevant information. So we, I think, have provided and crafted what you received last Friday, multiple-page slide show presentation that goes over just that. We focused primarily on 2019's fiscal year budget in the first half of the presentation that our CFO will go through. And then secondly, very, very, very preliminary numbers and forecasts for the 2020 budget, which you'll see there. Some of the things that you'll hear about will be solid and some of them may change over the next couple of weeks in preparation of the 2020 budget, which will be delivered to our City Council and then debated and discussed and eventually, hopefully, approved by the members of that body so that we can continue to operate city government efficiently and effectively. So Mary Sahadi and our team and all of our department heads have put together a presentation that I think will satisfy the requirements of the Charter and will entertain some questions after the presentation and we look forward to a productive evening for our citizens and our bodies of government. So I'll turn it over to Mary Sahadi.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council President, members of the City Council and members of the School Committee. As the mayor indicated and as you all know, this is the first year that we are having this joint meeting. Section 6.2 of the Charter has recommended that we have a joint meeting and review the financial condition of the city, review the forecasts of the revenues and the expenditures and include whatever other relevant information that we thought was necessary to include in the slide presentation. We started the presentation with the overview of the fiscal 2019 budget. The fiscal 2019 budget revised after the recap included a total of $281,923,426. As of our third quarter report, which you will all have momentarily, we have collected approximately 75% of that revenue or $210.7 million. Our expenditures through March are also tracking at the 75% mark and in fact, they're at 72% or $202 million. A couple of highlights that we can point out in the 2019 fiscal projections includes our health insurance tracking at 72%. As you know, the health insurance for this fiscal year has been coming in significantly lower than what our estimates were based on GBS and other estimates that we utilized, historical data that we utilized for fiscal '19's budget preparation. And in fact, we have already returned $1 million to the School Department in February of this year. Based on the fiscal estimates for 2019, it would appear that there will be additional monies due to the School Department at the end of the fiscal year as their health insurance costs are continuing to come in lower than what the estimates were a year ago this time.
And we'd like to just stress the fact that the city, working in conjunction with its unions, has been extremely effective in containing the cost of health insurance. And I would suggest to you that Fall River is actually leading municipalities across this Commonwealth in its ability to contain those health insurance costs. So I do want to recognize the unions and the cooperation between us. Back in fiscal year 2014, our total health insurance costs were approximately $53 million. In fiscal year 2019, those health insurance costs are $44 million. So we've seen a $9 million decrease over that timeframe. And as you're all aware, as Mrs. Sahadi mentioned, there has been additional funds that are required to provide to the School Department. But again, we think that it's important that those resources are directed towards services to the students and that we're able to contain those health insurance costs even far better than we had originally anticipated.
And then lastly, on this particular screen, I just point out the fact that our snow and ice, we had a great winter, so we're expecting snow and ice to continue to be over budget, but just slightly over budget this year at about $350,000. The budget was $526,000 and through March 31st, we had expended $868,000. So we're looking good there. The next slide is simply a visual so that you could see where most of our money comes from. As you can see, the majority of our revenue source is state aid, both general state aid and Chapter 70, followed by real estate taxes, then local receipts and other sources. The other sources primarily are the indirects that are charged to the enterprise funds for support of local expenditures. Following that, we included a slide that represented the revenues by category and where we expect the results of fiscal '19 to end the year, if you will. The real estate taxes, we're expecting, based on every other year, our collections on the current levy to be approximately 98% and we're also including an approximate $2 million of tax title. So it's very consistent with previous years. The local receipts, as you can see, are down slightly primarily because of the pay-as-you-throw reduction in revenue. Here, I would like to point out that within the local receipts, we have received some monies, both on the excise from the Commonwealth for the marijuana, as well as from the Northeast alternative sales. Going further, again, another chart for your ability to see really where the total dollars are being spent and as you can see, the majority of dollars spent in our budget go to education at $114 million for 2019, followed by employee benefits, which is primarily retirement and health insurance. We then presented 2019 expenditures. We compared 2018 to '19 as of March 31st. Again, this information will be included and has been included annually in your quarterly report, so this is something that is similar to what you will expect to see next week in your quarterly report, but we've reduced it here to just the functions of government and we're looking at, you know, ending the fiscal year on target with really nothing One of our ongoing liabilities that we talk about on a regular basis, we thought it was important to include here as part of the other relevant information, has to do with our pension and our OPEB liability. With regard to the pension liability, the total liability as of June 30, 2018, which is the latest information that we have with regard to both OPEB and pension, was approximately $311 million. That is on track to be fully funded in the year 2035. We follow an amortization schedule that's been provided by the state and we make those payments annually within the budget. So if you look in your fiscal '19 budget, your '18 budget and going forward in your '20 budget, you'll see that that pension expense increases somewhere between 6% and 7% a year based on the amortization schedule. As for the other post-employment benefits, that's your health insurance that is paid to your retirees for the most part, that is at $484,000. That particular liability has fluctuated from year to year. A lot of it has to do with the mortality tables, has to do with the number of participants that we have and whether they are on a single plan or a family plan. This particular liability is not mandated by the state, so as we sit here today, we're really paying this liability on a pay-as-you-go basis. We have established an OPEB trust and we have deposited into that trust $100,000 to date, a small amount. What a lot of communities are doing are setting a policy to set aside some percentage of their free cash annually to start funding or putting monies into the trust fund. The reserve funds, again, other relevant information that we thought was important to share with you has to do with both the stabilization fund and the balance that remains in the free cash account. The stabilization fund, as of today or as of March 31st, is at about $6.5 million. That has decreased from the $7.5 million that we had at the beginning of the year because we made two transfers. One transfer had to do with the additional transportation costs. That was a result of basically the additional school transportation need with result of the enrollment from the students that came over from Puerto Rico as a result of the hurricane. And the other was the most recent one. As you all know, the enrollment decreased for the charter school assessments and as a result, it changed the net school spending calculation and required the city to contribute another $608,000 to school operations. And that was done, I believe, last month. As far as the free cash goes, this past year, it was certified at $711,000 per this council's request and our request to the council, we moved $300,000 of those monies to support the Veterans Wall that's being built and then $70,000 into the OPEB trust. The next slides start really with a little bit of a narrative on this particular page with the result of how we go about it, where we start, how we build the budget each year. I know we talk about this at budget time when we have the hearings, but we thought it was necessary to really talk about it here just for a minute or two. We begin the whole process in January of each year. We meet with each of the departments, we have them... We have them submit to us what their needs are, and what their expected revenues are. And from there, we start to build the budget. This particular meeting is the first time we have this meeting. It had to be held, you know, at least 75 days before July 1st, so it's being called today. And your budget document that you will receive is due on May 15th, the same date, basically, that we have provided to you for the last couple of years. So although our budget is still in progress, and we still have some work left to do on it, we have every anticipation that you will have it by that May 15th date. Again, the fiscal 20 budget, we really start with some budget assumptions. The administration works with each of the departments to work through those assumptions. We estimate the revenue, the estimated expenses, and then we always continue with what are our long-range plans. And as you know, you've gotten a capital improvement plan most recently, and we try to work that capital improvement plan into the budgetary process. So for fiscal 2020, we're estimating that the budget estimate will be just under $300 million, and it will potentially represent an approximate 4% increase over the fiscal 19 budget. Right now, the budget includes the debt exclusion for the high school. We have no increases in miscellaneous fees in the current fiscal 20 budget. We have included new sources of revenue. Those revenue sources are going to be the impact fees, as well as the excise taxes for both recreational and medical. We have other revenues. As you know, we took over the parking garages, and we're happy to tell you that the kiosks should be delivered any day now. I think they're actually in, need to be installed, and we will be managing that parking garage, and so those revenues will now be part of our local receipts. We are working on and have sent out for bid the close-circuit TV monitors that we're going to sell advertising on within city government. We're still working with the billboards and hopeful that we will have at least some revenue from the billboards. In addition, the city has been awarded both the SAFER grant for the fire department and the EOPS grant for both police and fire. So we'll be utilizing those dollars within the fiscal 20 budget. As for the expenditures, we continue to work with the employee unions with regard to their contracts. We have a number of them that the administration is currently negotiating. We're happy to tell you that the healthcare rates, the rates for the employees, will be increasing 1.5%. It's probably the lowest percentage in quite some time. We know, aware, we're very aware, that the school department is requesting an appropriation of 101% of net school spending, and we're working with the school department with regard to that appropriation. In addition, we're working with the school department, we've met with them recently, to discuss transportation and to talk about the development of the transportation budget. We're proud also to tell you that with regard to the capital plan and those items that you have authorized for us to go ahead with, we're still continuing to keep our debt service budget under that $10 million mark that we have self-imposed. And this particular year, we're hopeful to include in the fiscal 20 budget some capital items for both the police department, the fire department, as well as continuing to increase the MIS infrastructure. The next couple of slides just gives you a little bit of an estimate on where we see some of the revenue projections to be. The first one includes where the tax rate is going to be. There's an anticipation that the tax rate will increase to 2.5%. As I indicated a minute ago, it will include the debt exclusion for the high school, and our estimated new growth will be at about $1.7 million. And you'll see here that the $1.7 million is a decrease over fiscal 19's revised budget. And it actually came in at $2,231,787. Some of that had to do with the fact that fiscal 19 included a reevaluation of both the assessments and the values of property, so the expectation is, in those years, it would always be a bit higher. So discussing it with the city assessor, we have been conservative and included it at the $1.7 million. Following that is what we now know to be the governor's budget. It's the only document that has been released to this point. The governor's budget increased our state aid by 6.9%. The state aid for education increased $5.9 million, and the state aid for general government increased $1 million. When we talk about the increase for state aid for education at 5.9, you'll see that when we talk about expenditures for the school department, the school department's budget is actually going up more than the 5.9, excluding the transportation. The next area of estimated receipts, which is our next highest amount, if you will, in terms of dollar value, at $21 million, is our local receipts. The meals tax, we're hopeful that will continue to increase. We have more restaurants in the city now, and we have already seen an uptick in the excise revenue that we have received from the Commonwealth with regard to meals tax. The cannabis impact fee, the expected amount that we are including in the budget is going to be approximately $1.1 million. We're being extremely conservative with this amount, as DOR is looking for historical data in order to estimate it. So as of this particular point, we have received, we have one recreational facility open, as you know. They have had sales from January 20th to February 28th, and remitted their first amount of $87,000 to us. So we're hopeful that that rate of sales will continue, and remember that that will be matched with the 3% excise from the Commonwealth. In addition, right now, we have a minimum of three post-fee agreements that we can particularly expect. I mean, I know there's been a lot of discussion on how many are out there and how many we will actually be opened, but at this particular point, we're expecting a minimum of three. As of today, we've actually received two of them for fiscal 19, and in fiscal 20, again, we're projecting that there'll be three. The parking garage fees, we are going to anticipate the parking garage fees based on the current rate that the employees and the courthouse and others are paying. And then, as you know, the purple bag revenue will decrease.
Your point of clarification?
On the second bullet, cannabis impact fee expected to be a 1.1 minimum. Is that meant to be $1.1 million minimum?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Million, okay.
Million, yeah, minimum.
And of that, one check has been received, equalling to the $87,000?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then our last source of revenue, are the revenues that we receive from other sources. $7 million, just slightly over the prior year, is the reimbursement from the enterprise funds for the general fund-related costs. And then tax title, as I indicated earlier when we were talking about the taxes, has historically been received at about $2 million. And that expects to be about the same. The next slide is simply, again, an analysis of a chart giving you what those percentages are. So again, you can see that our largest amount of revenue comes from state aid at about 54%, 45 of it being education, and nine of it being general state aid. As for the expenditures, and really what we're looking at with regard to both school expenditures and municipal expenditures, the school budget has requested $160.7 million, of which $106.6 million are operating expenses. This is 9% or $8.8 million over 2019. In addition, right now, as I said, we're working with the school department to negotiate school transportation and the busing contracts. But as of right now, the school transportation is an increase of $2.6 million over the prior year, or 35%, so it's a significant increase. And the school committee's budget, as it was presented to us, includes 65 additional For the municipal side of the budget, there's modest growth in most departments to cover fixed costs and contractual increases. In addition, the public safety division, if you will, fire, we have five additional positions due to the SAFER grant award, as we talked about earlier, due to integration with the EMS. EMS is going to cover about 25% of those SAFER firefighters. The police has requested an additional position, bringing their complement to 237, and the mechanics to six mechanics. I believe they have four mechanics right now. And then MIS, again, continues to increase their infrastructure and software. This particular year, the MIS department has requested that we include in the budget increasing or updating everyone's licenses to Microsoft Office 213 and to the Windows Server 2019. So we're hopeful that we will be able to accomplish that. And again, a chart just showing where we spend the majority of our money, so in fiscal 19 chart, and now you're looking at fiscal 20 chart, and the expenditures are in exactly the same areas in terms of education being the highest, followed by employee benefits. And then lastly, in terms of our other relevant information, based on the information in the charter, you know, we continue to take that five-year outlook on both the financial aspect of the budget, as well as the capital improvement aspect of the budget. We use that five-year forecast to do our long-range budgeting. We continue to work with the school department on their capital needs as well. We met just yesterday and discussed with MSBA where some of the accelerated repair programs are going, and what appropriations we will need from the city council with regard to authorizations to do some of those projects. And then our goal is always to eliminate any potential gaps that may exist to balance the revenue growth with our expenditure needs.
All right, Mary, could you just go back to slide 20? Just explain the debt service at 4%, because I think that's going to be important to some of these capital needs that the school department has.
So one of the things that we talked about earlier is, when we keep our budget at $10 million, or our self-imposed budget at $10 million for debt service, and that's the principal and interest on our current debt, when you look at really where we're spending our money, that is a significantly low amount. So at 4% of the total expenditures, we're spending the majority of our money on school operations, so on the school classroom-type expenditures, as well as our requirements for healthcare and retirement, so that's our employee benefits. And so as a result, keeping debt service at 4% is extremely low. So if you compare ourselves, and I didn't bring those comparisons with us, but some of the other gateway cities, you'll find that a lot of them are well over the 4%.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Counselors, any questions? Councilor C-3, Councilor Kamara.
Yeah, just very well presented. Thank you, Ms. Sahadi and Mrs. Veris and Mayor. I'm having a little trouble, and I wish there were a chart that was comparable. The preliminary expenditure estimates were listed as percentages, and the 2019 projected expenditures were listed as raw dollars. So what I'd like to see, and I don't know if there's something in this that I missed, but is there something that will show us the percentages of 2019 projected expenditures? And something that would show, so then it would be a page that's comparable to each other. We've got two items, both showing preliminary expenditures, but they're, one's using raw numbers, the other's using percentages. So I'd like to know where the growth is, where the reduction is.
So we did that actually intentionally for the 2020 budget.
To confuse us?
It was to confuse you. That's exactly why I did it. I'm only kidding. We did it really intentionally because the budget is still under construction, if you will. And I honestly, after we met as a team, we determined that we didn't want to say that, you know, administration was going to be $3,400,000, and then you would look at your 19, and you'd say, wow, that's going up, $40,000 over 19. And we don't know that yet, because so many of these areas are still being built. So we thought, we wanted to show you something so that the percentages would be the same. But I can certainly provide you a fiscal 19 chart that includes both the dollar value as well as the percentage, so you can at least compare the percentage to percentage. And you'll have the 20 budget.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
I certainly can do that.
So if I could do that. And that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Anything further? Councilor C-7, Councilor Pelletier?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out on the school side. I know on our side, there's not too many changes, and not too many people we put on. And how do the school committee come up with 50 or 60 new positions?
65.
55 new positions.
65.
65.
Mr. Superintendent?
We're very creative in what we do.
Flip the switch up.
You'd be more creative if you cut him at 65.
All right. Switch up.
Got you. All right, yeah, so we're very creative in what we do here. Innovative, we find money, right? Money doesn't grow in trees. What happens is, is that this year, because of the implementations of some of the recommendations in the foundation budget review, Chapter 70 is essentially giving us $10 million additional dollars. So within that budget, we've been able to build a budget that we feel meets the needs of the students in the city. That includes some conversions. We've moved some money off of grants and put it into the operating budget, which allowed us to create some positions. And we're essentially working as best we can to be very strategic in how we use those dollars to target specific needs. So at the end of the day, what that resulted in was 65 positions. Some are paraprofessionals, some are teachers, some are administrators, some are other S-Non staff. But all of them are focused primarily on the instructional side of the work that we do.
So if you didn't have the money, you wouldn't put them on?
We didn't have the, right, so I want to be very clear. The positions that we've requested of the school committee, and the school committee has voted to approve a budget to send to the council, all of our needs are being met within our request. Our request is 1% greater than net school spending, which, the House numbers did come out today, and the House is about $500,000 above the governor's numbers right now for net school spending. So right now, if you look at where we are, we're about a million dollars off of whatever our request is. So it's really probably, if I do the math right now, it's probably a request of 100.06% of the, 100.06% of the governor's House One numbers. So I do want to be very clear that the council understands. So for several years, the state, the House and the Senate have been working on implementing the additional change in the metrics used to calculate Chapter 70. So there's four buckets: health insurance, special education, English language learners, and students that live in poverty. Now, Fall River Public Schools got about 11,900 students counted in our Chapter 70 Foundation formula. Of those, we've had a huge increase in second language learners. We've had a huge increase in students who are impacted by poverty. And at the same time, our health insurance needs and our special ed costs have also increased. Therefore, with these new metrics, the Chapter 70 Foundation Formula is the House and the Senate, although they haven't fully implemented the recommendations to add increased weights to those factors, they have slowly moved those factors. Therefore, we have additional money in Chapter 70. It's a good year to be a district such as Fall River in terms of what Chapter 70 is moving towards. Now, we expect great change over the next few years in Chapter 70, so that additional revenue will allow places like Fall River to actually... revenue will allow places like Fall River to actually fund the things that the state constitution promised in 1993 with the Ed reform act. So where we are right now is in a good place, that we presented a budget that is not being greedy, that is focused on the needs of kids, and that I feel will allow us to really close achievement gaps and open doors to opportunity.
Mr. Superintendent, you indicated that the House budget had an impact of, I forget what you said. Did you indicate that your school department would be in a deficit of $1 million based on the 101, or is it the other way around?
So...
Just indicate that, because that's a little confusing.
All right. So 101 percent is about $1.6 million above 100 percent. So each percent in the budget is about 1.6 million. I proposed a budget at 101 percent of the governor's House One number, which is a total of $160 million. That figure, if you look at what 100 was yesterday, today, the House released their new numbers, and they've increased our Chapter 70 percentage by 500,000. Granted, we're still early in the process, and it's got to go to committee, the Senate's got to weigh in, and it's got to go to committee, and then all three needs to sign. But I'm hoping that the Senate comes in even higher, and that Chapter 100 percent figure will continue to rise. So 100 percent's going to get a lot closer to my 101 pretty soon. I think the school committee has done a really good job of focusing on meeting the needs of the kids and their deliberations of the budget, and they're requesting 101 percent of net school spending at the end.
Thank you. Councilor C. Seven?
Well, you're good. You know, we should have you on our side, maybe we can get some more help and do some things around the city of Fall River that we'd like to do, we're just trying to have the money. It's all well and good.
Yeah, no...
We'll educate the kids and all will. But transportation, what's going on with that? How much more money do you need?
All right. So where are we with transportation right now? We went out to bid on transportation. The bids came back at a price higher than I think everyone wants to spend on transportation. And right now, we're working with those low bidders to be able to see if we can bring that cost down further. We have a place setter in place, which we voted on, which was the true cost of the bids. But I'm feeling pretty confident right now that we're going to continue to do some good work to get those numbers down, and the true cost won't be what, where we are right now, and that's what we're working to address.
If you feel that the bids are too high, comes in way too high, according to you, what, 2.6 million over?
Well, over than what we currently spend, but that's the going rate.
So why don't you rebid it?
Great question.
No, why?
I feel that, I feel that there's danger in rebidding a bid when people know what the playing field is, because they're all going to come in higher. So I'm going to take a chance.
Come in higher, they're going to come in lower if they want it.
Well, I don't necessarily agree with that. So, you know, I've been doing this work for about 12 years. I got a little experience, too.
You're 2.6 million dollars over.
Yep, yep.
And you're telling me if you go for another bid, they've got to come in higher? There's no way.
I'm not, I'm not confident that they won't. And you also understand...
Why don't you try?
You also understand, well, give me a chance to negotiate first. Put me in a room and see what we can do.
Has that happened, Mr. Superintendent?
So I could have stepped in here, too. We...
Just one minute.
Sir.
Have all the bids, they've been given out already?
So, no. The only bid that's been approved is for the out-of-district vans, and you approved that, and that went to Tremblies. And that was a reduction, $500,000 less.
Well, all right, there you go.
Yeah. That was a really good bid.
Well, I think you should have rebid it, but I'd like to hear what the mayor says.
So we're still working on those numbers, counselors. So we are going to negotiate, and we have begun discussions with those companies.
Can I get a point of information? Sure. Councilor C. One?
I'm just curious, how are you, if you went out to bid, how are we having negotiations? That's outside 30B.
The one, the one person that we're negotiating with is the one outside of 30B. So it's a special ed transportation, which is the one that came in the highest.
So you're only negotiating special ed that does not need to be called to bid, that's exempt from 30B?
We already, we went out to bid with all of the bids.
Yep.
And all of those bids came in higher than we expected, with the exception of the in-district and out-of-district vans. The special ed being exempt from 30B, we have the opportunity to negotiate with that bidder.
So you're saying the only ones you're negotiating with...
Is the, is...
Is the special ed out of, which is the highest amount.
Yes, and all of, and all of the bid documents are more or less on buses. So we obviously have, we feel that we have room to reduce buses, which is going to reduce that price.
There's also an exploration of, you know, I know this, we don't want to get on a tangent, but there's an exploration to take some of those buses in-house over the long term as well. So we're doing some of those analysis as well. I don't personally, I said this to my colleagues, and I spoke to the superintendent about this, as well as Mr. Pacheco, I don't believe that through contracts and going forward through contracts, the city of Fall River and its taxpayers should be funding the purchase of buses for private companies, which is happening in some of these contracts for various reasons. It's not, you know, it's the requirements to have safe and efficient buses, that's very important for our student transportation. But our goal is not, by any means, and what was stated during public input time is very important, our goal is not to reduce any services to parents or students through bus transportation and contract negotiations. It's in fact to deliver more services. So the school committee has, through the bid process, also required a lot of improvements, which has pushed the price of transportation up as well. That is something that hasn't been discussed, but for example, requiring three cameras on these buses, that's an additional cost to the city. That's an increase in services and safety to our students. So I don't want anybody to sit here and just think that it's a blanket $2.6 million increase for the exact same services that we got in the last five years of transportation. It is a new contract with new specs and new requirements to increase safety and services to students. And our goal is not to decrease services to students via transportation at all, in fact, the opposite, while also maintaining as close to the $9 million that we're currently spending. That is our goal, and that's a goal that's ongoing with the help of Mr. Pacheco, who's leading that effort with the superintendent in my office.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Pelletier.
Thank you. You think it's a bad idea maybe to go out and rebid?
I have had those discussions with Mr. Pacheco and the superintendent, and there is precedent when you do rebid, and I think some of my colleagues here could back me up on that, on the school committee. When you do go out to rebid, there have been instances in precedent in the past where those bids come back higher, again, for numerous reasons that some people that were here at that time, I was not, can go into. I think there's danger in doing that. I think that we have the ability and the leverage to be able to negotiate specifically with special needs transportation, which is a very important component of our transportation, but also very, very costly and exempt from Chapter 30B. So very similar to when we privatized trash collection, because trash collection was exempt from Chapter 30B, the negotiations could take place pretty directly with those companies to get a price that made sense for both sides. So similarly here, that's what we're undertaking. One of the leverages that we do have is we can and have the ability to purchase our own buses in the future. So with the, with different companies, in this case, I believe Welling City, we have the ability to negotiate down on that price with them because they're exempt from Chapter 30B. If we can get to a price that makes sense, as close to $9 million as possible, then we'll all be satisfied. The city will be satisfied, school department will be satisfied, I think the committee will be satisfied, and hopefully the council will be satisfied. So give us a little bit more time to work on that number and get it as close to the $9 million without reduction in services to students and families.
So you think we should get a few buses, is that what you're saying?
In the future, I think we may want to look at our own bus fleet, not all the buses, but certainly a bus fleet, that would allow us to bid just the drivers, that portion of it, the actual driving portion. That might give us some more flexibility in terms of bonding. Obviously, when a company is to buy new buses, because it's our requirement, they've got to bond for those new buses over the five-year period at probably a higher interest rate than the city. The city can bond for those buses over a 10-year period at a lower interest rate. So that's, that'll have an impact on transportation and future budgets, but we are fortunate right now, and we're in a financial position right now to not have to resort to that. So if we can plan into that, going into the next five-year contract, or maybe even midway purchasing some buses, I think that's going to be more financially prudent.
And then we'd have payroll?
No, we wouldn't. So that's, again, we would, we would contract the, the actual transportation, the actual drivers, we would maintain our own fleet. Doesn't have to be an entire fleet, could be vans, could be buses, could be a combination. But again, that is not for tonight's discussion. That is something that we're using as leverage that is still possible.
All right. Well, just consider my, my idea, and if it works out, okay. If you think it'll work out, if you think you can save money, all well and good, that's we're here to try to make sure that taxpayers don't get burdened with these taxes. Again, two and a half again, this year, two and a half, last year, the year before, last 15 years, and people just getting out of hand.
No, Counsel, I totally agree.
That's what it is.
I totally agree.
So with that, I yield for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Before we get into it a little further, before I acknowledge Counselor in Seat Two is next to speak, and while we're speaking of this transportation, I don't want to take the floor, but want some information on this. Didn't the school department, Mr. Superintendent, or Mr. Pacheco hire a consultant that was hired to reduce the possible expenses for transportation? Could you elaborate a little bit for the city council and the public on why we hired a consultant? What was that process about and why the bids came in higher after hiring a consultant to reduce the cost of transportation?
Well, I would think that every time we hire a consultant, we're looking to reduce costs, and no matter what we do, whether it's on the city side or school department side. However, we don't control the bids. We control the document that we put out for bid, but we don't control the bids.
Right, I acknowledge that.
And we can't, we can't, we can't bring bidders to the city that don't want to bid. And so the document was put together. We were looking for some specific changes, looking for GPS system on the buses so that we can know where every bus is all the time. We'd allow parents to be able to pick that bus up on GPS, so if a bus was late, caught in traffic, they wouldn't be panicking at a bus stop. We also wanted the buses to be the oldest bus in the fleet, to be 10 years old. We have buses out there that are older than that. So we were looking for reliability, and we were asking for 10-year-old buses to be the oldest. We also wanted to include in all of this process the cameras. We know what the cameras do in schools as far as discipline and surveillance and safety, so we're looking for the same thing on the buses. By putting the cameras on the buses, we may, at some point, be able to reduce the amount of monitors that we use.
Correct.
We use an awful lot of monitors. Monitors are $100 a day on each bus. So all of these items were put into the system to bid that, and the mayor's absolutely...
Was that at the recommendation of the consultant?
Yes, it was. And some of the requests, the GPS was our request from the department. The cameras were a request that we had from the department. And then some of the other items, and if I could, 16, close to 16 and a half percent of the increase is also due to items beyond our control, which is, and I'll list them because I think it's pretty important, wage and benefit state mandated increases, paid sick leave for part-time employees, mandatory leave with pay, mass health state mandate, liability insurance cost increases, minimum wage increases, and then the complaint from the bus companies has always been retain and recruit qualified drivers and qualified monitors. So the bus companies are willing to work with the city because our contract is a more or less contract. So we decide how many buses we're actually going to put on the road, but they're not against reducing buses because they're having a tough enough time filling all of these routes that we already have.
All right.
So the person did, the company did exactly what we asked them to do, put in the things that we asked them to do, and then they also asked us if we wanted to include in our particular RFI, IFB, I'm sorry, some items that have been put into other districts, which is that 10-year piece and a few other items in there. An increase in the liability insurance, we were way below most of the other districts. So those are the items that also were cost drivers.
Okay. But so, so the headline that the consultant was hired by the school department to reduce costs of transportation, that wasn't his only scope, you know, just to look at safety, security, and what other school systems are doing?
Yes.
Because we were not seeing a savings in transportation right now, right?
Right. You're not seeing a savings in transportation right now. I'm hoping to at least stop the bleeding.
Yeah, I acknowledge that.
Transportation has gone up every single year.
Yep.
So what we were doing wasn't working.
Okay.
So we need to stop that at some point, and the only way we needed to stop that was to completely revise what we were doing. And again, there's some work still to be done, and we, fortunately, we have the option to still negotiate.
Okay, thank you. Counselor in Seat Two, Counselor Kamara.
Point of clarification.
School Committee in Managuer, your point of information?
Just a point of clarification on the information that was just presented. So the bus contracts on Monday night, where we were told, the regular ed, the special education, and the after-school transportation was all going to be negotiated, was what we were told Monday night.
And we can.
What I heard...
And we can. I'm sorry if I didn't say that. Where, anytime a bidder comes to the table with a dollar amount, that can be negotiated. Basically, the negotiation is, we're reducing regular transportation by nine buses, so that the contract would reflect the reduction by nine buses. That's the negotiation.
So on the regular ed, which went up by 160 percent, that's how much the total went up?
Yes, yes.
On the special ed side, which was 30B?
Yes.
You bid at 30B, correct?
They all bid 30B.
So we haven't rejected the 30B?
We haven't rejected, we haven't rejected the 30B.
So we can therefore treat it like it's not a 30B?
We would have to reject the 30B and then negotiate.
So you're not negotiating then?
We've already talked to that low bidder. We've already talked to the low bidder, which we have every right to talk to the low bidder.
So you're negotiating a 30B?
Until I sign the contract, we've negotiated nothing.
Just a point of, why I'm saying that is, Monday night, I made a motion to get rid of all the bids, to allow you to negotiate like a 30B never happened.
Yes.
What I just heard some, one of the councils ask was, if you're negotiating, and you said, yes, you're negotiating, because it's not 30B, and it's just, you just answered the question that it is 30B. Because we haven't reject, until we reject a bid as 30B, which we have the right to do in the contract...
Yes.
Technically, you're dealing with a 30B issue still.
And, and I have that right to deal with that person individually.
And negotiate items out...
Yes.
Even though it's like an odd 30B.
I would have that option to do it anyway. The contract states it's a more or less contract. So if I was to add on buses, I would have to negotiate that. I couldn't settle for the price that was given if I wanted to add 10 buses to that number. I can also do the opposite. I can reduce that by 10.
So you're therefore not reducing the number of years of buses, how many buses, the cameras, or any of the things that the mayor just mentioned, or whoever just mentioned that? That's not on your...
Ms. Aguirre, I didn't say that. I don't think that, personally, from where I sit, I don't think that anything is off the table. I do believe that in an order of priority, I think safety has to be number one, beyond anything else. If we're going to put a price on safety, I think that's a problem. So I'm going to say that the cameras, from where I sit, is not negotiable. I'm not the boss. So I'm looking at the bosses.
Right. The only reason why I asked that question is because you see different information now than what we had on Monday, and I was concerned about it.
If I confused anybody, I'm sorry.
I think we should have got rid of all the bids. I agree with Counselor Pelletier. We should have discovered the bids. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Counselor in Seat Two, Counselor Kamara.
Almost, I think Mr. Pacheco explained some of the conditions that were in the contract that were out there. Good.
Thank you. Mrs. Viveras?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm sorry to disrupt Counselor in Seat Two, but I just think it's important. It is an informational meeting. I think it is important that we make sure that, that accurate information is delivered here this evening. So I just want to address a couple of points that were made specifically by the superintendent. I know that it may be, may have been that when you're referring to increased costs, health insurance may in fact have been a problem for the schools, but I've already been contacted by members of the employee committee that worked very, very hard over the past few years to try to reduce those health insurance costs. So I want to once again reiterate the fact that the health insurance cost within the budget has actually been decreasing substantially over the, over the years, allowing more money to be directed into the classrooms. And it is due to a lot of hard work on behalf of the, the union representatives and the administration. Some of those union representatives, our school department unions as well, but I think this is an important matter to stress, and the council knows that because you actually had to recently transfer additional funds to the school department because of that reduced to the school department because of that reduced health insurance spending. So I just want to make it clear that, that health insurance is not taxing the school department budget at this time. Additionally, Mrs. Sahadi?
Yes. So additionally, I just want to talk about the dollar values, if you will, for the state aid. So state aid did in fact go up $10 million. But state aid for education, the chapter 70, went up 9.3 in the governor's budget. But the assessments went up 3.4 million. So the net increase for education was not $10 million in the governor's budget. It was $5.9 million. So it's significantly less than $10 million. And I just, I want to make that clear because the assessments are the charter school assessments and they're assessed against net school spending. And that was a $3.4 million increase. So the net was only $5.9 million.
Thank you very much. Next Counselor, stand up to speak, Counselor, Counselor in seat two? Sure.
I just want to be clear.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry.
Net school spending still went up by $10 million. Assessments apart, that's the required contribution, is $159 million. So all of that is included in our budget request.
But the reason I'm making the point here is that the operating budget is not going up $10 million.
Okay. At the end of the day, the figure that when you look at indirect and every single cost that we spend on education in the city of Fall River, 100% of the foundation budget is now $159,592 million. That is the true cost of education. I like using the whole numbers. I don't know why we have a habit of using the smaller numbers operating in transportation. I think it confuses people because when we try to get to net school spending and we're one of 20 districts in the Commonwealth that is at or under 100 to 101, that figure is the figure that's the game changer for us.
It may be the game changer for you, Superintendent, but the issue is, what's the appropriation in the budget? And that's what the general public looks at and that's what we look at in terms of the appropriation.
I understand that and I respect that. I just want to be clear that legally, we are required to spend a minimum of 100% of net school spending. That's why that figure, in my world, is the liver die figure. In the accounting world, you guys are accountants, I'm not.
Understood.
But in my world, I care about that number.
Understood.
And I think the additional point, though, that has to be made is the fact that while we all value education and we understand the importance of those expenditures, the school department budget that was submitted was at 101% of net school spending. Admittedly, that may drop a little with the new budget. But the money that was provided to support that does not equal that increase. We're receiving an additional $5.9 million and the school department budget that will be before you, that was approved, far exceeds that $5.9 million increase. So what that effectively means, when you couple it with the increase in transportation, is that those additional expenditures for education, for that close to 101% of net school spending, as well as the increase of transportation costs, are funds that have to be raised and will inevitably affect our operating budget on the city's side. And that's the only point we wanted to stress.
And that's, and that's why we have these negotiations, you know, with the school department and the school committee, to get to a number that makes sense for both sides of government, like we do every single year. So when a budget, a final budget is presented to the city council, you'll have an opportunity to weigh in on the final numbers. But tonight is not the final number. We still have many, many conference committee meetings up at the State House that have to occur for us to get to that final number.
Can I just, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Mr. President, if I can, because someone made the comment, it may have been Ms. Sahadi, about, you know, it being an informational meeting and putting out information for the public. The $159 million proposed budget for the school department, which would equal net school spending, what percentage of that actually comes from revenue generated from the city?
Percentage?
Or what number? Roughly indirects. So we're talking 50 million of the 159 million that's requested?
Approximately. I think it's 52, but right.
So I think it's fair to tell the people that the school budget, 85% or 80% of that comes to us from chapter 70 state aid. So this isn't money that the city's contributing towards education. Their piece of it, albeit a large amount, is roughly 50 million, 59 million, somewhere in that ballpark.
Plus the difference between what the state aid is and the operating budget.
Right.
Correct.
But I just, I want to make that clear, that we're talking about increases, we're talking about adding positions. The reason we're doing that is because the allotment of chapter 70 has increased.
Correct.
It may not be the 10 million that you've, that we've discussed here tonight, but I just want the public to be aware that the dollar amount that's represented, a large part of that, a majority of that actually comes from chapter 70 reimbursement from the state and not from revenue that the city generates. And that's why we argue that because we're a community that has a high population of low-income students, that we should get a larger proportion of chapter 70 reimbursement. So I just want to be clear with that because I don't want people in the community thinking education's killing the city. In fact, majority of the educational funding comes from the state for us and we're not funding it out of local revenue here citywide.
I think that, I just want to also clarify something, too. I think it's a great, great point by the vice chair. Also earlier was stated, I just want some clarity on this for everyone's edification. Health insurance costs throughout the state have increased significantly locally, and I think that was the point the superintendent had made, that it's a statewide increase. Locally, we have done a fabulous job and that's a credit to the employees and all the different departments of government to keep health insurance costs down. So while other communities are experiencing higher healthcare costs in the school department, much of that additional chapter 70 money, much of that additional aid is going to cover health insurance costs. In Fall River, because we've been able to keep, keep those costs down so much, the school department has more money now to put into classrooms. So again, that's a credit to the superintendent, the employees, quite frankly, and both, both parties, both parts of government. So that's an important point to make as well, but shouldn't be missed.
And just one additional point on the issue of transportation. It is an educational expense. We acknowledge that it's not part of net school spending, but $12 million approximately is going to have to be allocated unless we can do some good negotiating, Mr. Pacheco. But that additional $12 million is an educational expense that is being absorbed, you know, by the people of Fall River and that is being used for education. So I can appreciate that a lot of your funding is coming from the state, but that, you know, 11-point-whatever-million dollars for transportation is also an educational expense that we think is very important. We've got to get our kids to school safely, but it is an educational expense that is being paid by the city of Fall River.
Thank you. Counselor in seat six, Counselor Law.
It just reminds me of the, you know, we're talking about budgets, you know? We talk a million dollars, $10 million, $50 million, $100 million, you know? Eventually, we really have to consider it's real money. It's not just numbers. Because I get, I go back and forth, I'm confused. But one of the parts that you said earlier that kind of caught me from my standpoint was when we talked about the increase in English language learners and the increase in students that are in poverty. Is that because they weren't funding them correctly prior to this or are we having a growth in those numbers?
Great question. English language learners have tripled in the three years I've been here as superintendent in the Fall River Public Schools. So those kids, so if every kid, you get a hundred dollars for every kid, those kids, you get $120. So the more kids we get that are second language learners, there's more money on the chapter 70 that comes to the district. We also have about 168 new students. So that's an additional $10,000 per kid from the state. The state funds 80.22% of the education in Fall River. Fall River pays 19.72%. 19.72%. And for special, for students in poverty, those figures are also up above, I believe it's like 65% right now. It might even be higher. Might maybe, yeah, yeah, just closer to 80. And so those figures are now accurately recorded. Now, here's what's interesting and you have to understand. When I mentioned to you earlier about the foundation budget and the metrics used, it's really rocket science, trying to figure it out, and there's only like two guys in the Commonwealth that know it. What we've been advocating for is that places like Fall River, kids that live in poverty, that they shouldn't get the same $100 that the kids in Dartmouth get if they're counted as regular kids. Those kids also have a weighting factor and that has not been weighted yet. So this is the big fight you've heard on Beacon Hill about the foundation budget review and fiction in chapter 70. So if that compromise, and there's three bills out there and something's going to happen this year, over the next five years and even the governor's proposed, all those weightings will go up. So if we continue to have a strong foundation here in Fall River, about where we are, 10,000, about 11,900 kids, we'll see in the next few years, our chapter 70 continue to grow. Now, the hard part for municipalities is, well, you still got to fund your 20%. And we got to find that because if that money's not coming from the state, you know, that's a real burden on, on us collectively to make decisions. But, you know, I do, again, want to, I understand the assessments and those things, but as a superintendent, I can tell you, I've been through, since the downfall of the market in 2006, I've done nothing but cut for how many years that is since then, through Swamp Squat, through Brockton, haven't been able to really do what I want to do my first two years here. This is a good year. And, and the years are going to get better because we're going to do the right thing and fix the foundation budget on Beacon Hill and that will increase our chapter 70 appropriations for the foreseeable future. And I also say, the good news is, we're growing. 168 kids. Brockton lost 500 kids. We gained 168 kids. We're doing something right.
Right. So if we gain 168 kids and we're working at 80% of them living in poverty, of the 168 kids of them, is the 80% of them in poverty?
So it's, it's, all right. The poverty factor is based on income and/or other metrics that are used for involvement in state agencies. So that's how they count these things. We don't necessarily do it on the lunch forms, is the way we used to do it. We do direct certifications now because of the way technology is. And the numbers of students particularly, you know, we have at least, you know, 10% of my kids are in McKinney-Vento. So that's over 1,000 kids who are homeless. So, you know, you think about how we wait and look at special populations, Fall River, the public schools of Fall River are one of the, one of the poorest districts in the Commonwealth.
What I'm asking is, is it growing? Is it getting, is that, is that problem of McKinney-Vento, homelessness, poverty, all of that?
Yes, of course it's growing.
It's growing. So our population within the city in that, those areas are growing.
We're seeing in the last...
From your, from your numbers?
From my numbers, in the last three years, we're becoming much more newcomer arrival to America, so a lot of second language learners. And we are becoming much more culturally diverse, much more ethnically diverse. And at the same time, we're seeing more and more students coming who are either McKinney-Vento or DHS involved in the...
DHS, is that the right term?
Yeah. Housing, so, but at the same time, when you look at what we're doing, you know, we're doing great work across the board. So we're meeting the needs. And one of the things I'm seeing is that we're becoming a real destination. Families looking to find a place that has a great public school system and may not have X amount of money to buy a house and wherever, are able to afford a really decent house here and moving here. So you see, what happens is funny, this is just not to get off track, but, you know, if we start the year with 10,000 kids, October 1, they take the count. Between October 1 and now, we've also grown that isn't counted, another 150 kids. And that will be counted in the next year's chapter 70 formula. So we're always getting students into the system for a host of reasons. I just, I was sitting here before the meeting started, I got an email from a mom saying, my kids are diamond, I want to go to Durfee. How do I do it? You know, that stuff happens every day, but it's the folks that move in, it's a constant cycle. The churn rates are tough, but we know in Gateway City's churn rates are tough. So you look at the triangle, Brockton, Taunton, Fall River, New Bedford, we get a lot of churn in between those communities and also include Attleboro in that figure, folks moving around, different reasons, whatever. And, you know, that's in and out of the system. But what we're doing right in the system is the supportive work, and I want to credit one of my colleagues, Mr. Corey. We're going out in the community, we're welcoming families, we're doing it in second languages and we're, I think, doing a very good job of becoming much more culturally competent in, in building those relationships to start so everyone understands the value of an education.
Anything further from the council? Counselor in seat one, Counselor Lekadeen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a question on regards to, I think, slide two, when you start talking about revenues by category. Is the actual breakdown, do you?
I think it's four.
Is it two? Three, four?
Ready?
Yeah, that's it. So my understanding is right, so they revised, we, given us the actuals, the revised budget FY '19, total revenue is $281.9 million. Given us the actuals at the end of March. And then your FY '19 projected revenues are, is that the new projections going forward based on the actuals? Is that how I understand that?
Yes, Council.
So there's a, I guess, a deficit in the revenue amount by 1.1 million?
Approximately.
What's that attributed to?
800,000 is the purple bags. And I didn't look through all of the details, but that's the majority of it.
So then if we go two, two slides forward, we've got the expenditures by function. So I notice just the FY '19 budget, the reserve account of the 1.1 million dollars, that's been removed and you projected. What's that money going to be used for?
The 1.1 million, we don't intend to use it. Or if we use it at all, it'll be a half a million dollars to cover, I mean, $300,000 to cover the snow and ice deficit.
So that's how you're going to make up your revenue deficit?
That's correct, Council.
Okay. Second, second bullet, you mentioned that the budget includes the debt exclusion for the high school. Can I just get an explanation on this? The, when we were discussing the debt exclusion for the high school, I thought we were about two years, three years out based on the building of the project, you'd go short term. So roughly 263 million dollars was the cost for the school. We were, once we take out the state, MSBA reimbursement, we're talking about $100,000. So I believe we were told, and these are just rough numbers based on my memory, roughly $40 million was coming from the levy, the tax levy. So within the two and a half percent and all that, 60 million, so the remainder of the 60 million would be coming from the debt exclusion. Why would we be hitting the debt exclusion in fiscal year 2020?
Well, as we indicated earlier, we're still working on the budget, but with the increases that are currently being proposed, both by varying departments as well as the school department, the two and a half percent and the new growth are not going to be significant enough to cover the operating expenses.
So my projection, when I sat here last time advocating for us not to go above the two and a half percent because it was going to be a money grab later on, is happening a lot sooner than we anticipated. I mean, I'm not even out of the fiscal year yet. And I supported the projects. I didn't support the debt exclusion. But again, we're going to reduce, how much was the purple bags generating? 2.3 million?
Approximately $2 million.
Approximately $2 million.
Yeah, at the cost of the bags.
Which, again, I also argue that if we want to use that, that could help offset some of the debt payments for, for the Durfee High School. But again, we went to the taxpayers, we told them a story, it's completely different now. Couple more PowerPoints bullets down. Other new revenue sources included the parking garages. When we say other new revenue sources, is it just the revenue that currently exists here or do we have a plan for the parking garages?
This would be the revenue from...
As it exists now?
As it exists now for, from BBP. So it would be the Pearl Street and the Third Street revenue.
Okay. And in the past, the, the administration has, has always claimed that, you know, that we have gotten off the safer grants. So I'm a little curious to the change in the strategy of awarding or applying, I guess, for safer grant funding to add new additional bodies, again, creating, you know, a structural deficit or trying to make that up once the, once the grant runs off. And I guess we've never really had a conversation as to where we want to see and what, what the optimum staffing levels would be in the, in the fire department. So I guess this is kind of contradicts what the administration has stated in the past. And I guess I'm just curious to hear what the approach is.
Well, no, it does not contradict what the administration has said in the past. The administration has always maintained that we need to have a plan to absorb all safer grant positions, all grant positions, quite frankly. That does not mean that this administration or any administration throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the country will not apply for safer grant funding to increase the staffing levels at no additional cost to taxpayers while we can get that money. It's only when the money is beginning to run out that we have to ensure that those budget years absorb those safer grant positions. The administration will not turn down free money from the federal government.
Okay. So it is, it is a direct contradiction because this administration has bolstered before in Okay, so it is, it is a direct contradiction because this administration has bolstered before in the past that-
We have also that we've absorbed SAFER grant positions within the budget to not lay those people off.
You have stated, you have stated in the past, and rightfully so, that you will not be accepting SAFER grants in-
We have never stated that.
For overtime, and that you have gotten, you've gotten away from grants to fund positions. It has been stated-
That is absolutely incorrect.
It's not absolutely incorrect. It has been stated at the floor of the city council on a number, a number of occasions.
That is incorrect. We have stated, and I'll reiterate it again, we will absorb all SAFER grant positions into the budget and not lay those people off when those SAFER grants are expiring, and that will continue to be the policy of this administration. So this new SAFER grant, until the grant is running out, the grant will pay for the positions. Upon the grant's expiration, the city will ensure that we can absorb those positions, which has been the, the policy and the, uh, the accepted, um, uh, strategy by both chiefs. When we're applying for any kind of grant, that, that is going to supply a position. We don't want to be in a position which was the past uh, policy of other administrations, where once that grant expires, we now have to lay off that individual because we do not have the funding within the budget to, uh, to fund that position. That has been the, the strategy this administration has followed and will, and will continue to follow. We will never turn away, uh, federal dollars or, or free money uh, to increase our ability to provide services and safety to members of our public. It's just that we have to make sure that when those grants are running out, that we absorb them, and that's what we'll continue to do. And we have done. We have absorbed all SAFER grant positions under this administration into the operating budget.
Well, kudos to you. Uh, so can we explain a little bit more as to how we plan on absorbing this when the grant runs? Because you're, you're sitting here now. We're going to debt exclusion two years earlier than we stated we were going to go to debt exclusion. Because we were told by the administration, unless the mayor wants to say that that didn't take place on the council floor, because he's been saying those types of things, um, forty million was to be absorbed within the, uh, general fund.
So that is a proposal that we're looking at and we continue to look at. We have the ability to do that at any time over the next, what is it, two-year, uh, twenty-year loan order?
Yeah, at any time that we have the ability to absorb it into the budget. And we actually really do have, um, until the recap in the fall.
Correct.
So depending on what other revenue sources we are able to acquire between now and then, um, we may not be going to, um, the taxpayers for the entire amount, but the placeholder I have in there right now is the debt service on the short-term debt.
And how much is that? What was that?
Two point one million.
Two point one million. How much is the SAFER grant?
SAFER grant, uh, council is covering the cost of the five positions over three years. Um, they're paying actually seventy-five percent in year one. Um, the additional twenty-five percent is being, uh, paid through the enterprise, the, um, emergency medical services, the enterprise account. As you know, Councilor, we have been working, uh, for some time now to complete, um, a full integration of the fire and EMS departments. Um, we have instituted a training component whereby, um, new firefighters will also be trained as basic, um, EMTs, um, upon the completion of their training. Um, it's expected that they will spend time on the, uh, the medical, um, facilities, uh, rescue and squad vehicles, and that, um, that is a direct cost uh, coverage of that twenty-five percent of, of the required SAFER grant. Um, as you know, we are, um, not only moving towards integration, but we're also uh, ramping up for additional, uh, medical services. Uh, we plan to launch a, uh, service for transfer uh, amongst facilities that we will provide. Um, we're looking at the mobile integrated health that the state is, um, in the process of, uh, initiating so that we can provide additional services, and we have every expectation, um, that those five individuals will be fully absorbed uh, within our budgets, um, at the conclusion of the SAFER grant.
So the seventy-five percent, how much is that of the five?
Council, I don't have that exact number before me, and I don't want to misquote, so I'll-
Rough estimate. I don't, I mean, I don't know the average salary and-
I don't know if the chief, Chief Lynch probably has that exact number.
Well, while the chief's coming down, um, what are we looking for the optimal? What's the benchmark for the staffing levels for the fire department?
Well, again, these additional five positions will bring them to one ninety-five. Um, but again, I, I want to stress that there is going to be utilization of this staff, this manpower on the EMS side as well. So I don't want to represent that we're adding five FTEs. We're adding something less than that because of the time that they'll be spending on the medical rescue. However, they will be fully trained firefighters in the event of a significant, uh, fire, that they will be able to get diverted to provide the fire-related services that are necessary.
Mr. Mayor, what's, what's your optimal goal for staffing levels at the fire department?
That's not for tonight's discussion. We can have a discussion about that in a few.
Sure it is, sure it is. Uh, the title of the slides are-
There's another seat there, Chief.
I don't, Councilor, I don't have, I don't have this. It might be. I don't have an exact number for you tonight. I, our goal has been to continue to increase the fire department staffing levels to achieve the maximum public safety of all of our residents. As you know, we've had significant fires, uh, in the city in the last year, uh, starting with the, the New Year's Day fire, and, uh, I wouldn't want to commit to any number, uh, at this moment in time. We're going to continue to increase the department as much as we possibly can, which I know that the chief, uh, follows the same exact, uh, philosophy that I do. I follow his philosophy, really, I should say, the other way around.
All right.
Which is to continue to increase the manpower. Now, you know that we've increased the manpower from a hundred and seventy-five firefighters to a hundred and ninety-five firefighters in the upcoming twenty twenty budget over the last three and a half years. And if we can continue to do so at a, at a rate that, uh, the city can, and the city budget can absorb, that's what we're going to continue to do.
Council, your question?
Chief?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. So just to go back, this is within the scope. The slide says review of the fiscal and financial condition of the city. The financial condition also talks about the staffing. Um, I, I think it's highly fiscally irresponsible to suggest that you don't have numbers for the fire department and we're continuing to add firefighters based on grants. So you should have had those conversations in advance to tell us what the optimal number and staffing level is and what the goal is for the city of forever that we're trying to achieve. So we know that. Is it two hundred? Is it two hundred and five? Is it two-ten? What does it mean, uh, in terms of standards? Where are we meeting the national standards in terms of the number of firefighters on scene, things of that nature? I, I just, I, I've got a, I've got a question because, and a concern, because we are taking, uh, grants to continue to add to the staffing. We know how, how that has impacted the department before in the past, and we've done, we've done that out of necessity. A lot of the folks that are sitting here at the table have not been around for the nine-C cuts similar to two thousand and nine, um, similar to what the superintendent has talked about in all his years and making cutting of budgets. So when we start adding bodies utilizing grants, it becomes very dangerous if we don't have a strategic plan and an actual number so that we can all sit here and say, "Okay, the goal is two hundred, two oh-five, whatever the case may be."
The goal was two hundred.
Okay.
This is from a few years ago, yes. That was our goal, was to, uh, two hundred.
How many do you have now, Chief?
We have, with these five safe positions, we'll be at one ninety-five. And the difference between the SAFER grants today and back in the days when we did have to lay people off when the money ran out, is that we've been within our reasonable uh, estimation of what we can afford. If you remember the last SAFER grants, they were large numbers. At one point, there were thirty firefighters.
Absolutely. Went from two thirty-five to one hundred and eleven firefighters.
Which was uns- unsustainable.
Yeah.
So now we're basically, we're, we're doing it in smaller bites.
What year was that?
Uh-
Two thousand and nine.
Yeah, two thousand and nine, yeah, yeah. So in the case of this current SAFER grant, we decided that five was sustainable at the end of the three years. And our grand plan was to integrate those five positions in EMS so that those costs could be absorbed.
Right.
And get back to your original question when you first called, uh, called me down here. We roughly figure each firefighter is a hundred thousand dollars. So you're basing on that.
So a hundred thousand times, would, would we say five?
Five.
Percent of that?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and the only reason, and I'm not picking on the fire department, but we've-
I understand.
We've got a, a situation here where our revenues, uh, school committee man Costa alluded to this. When you, when you start looking at the revenues that we have, about fifty-three, fifty-four percent of our revenue comes from the state, right? So we are reliant on the state. When you start looking at the number of the, the revenue that goes over to the school department, just, and I'm, I'm not looking at indirect costs. I know there's additional costs that are going over to the schools. But you're talking about ninety percent of the funding coming from the state to cover their direct costs when we look at, and that includes, um, you know, diamonds, uh, assessment and everything like that, the transportation, which is not part of net school spending. So the minute, and we, and we've seen it, and everybody that's been in government sees the, the cycle, it's cyclical, right? So we've got the pros and valleys. So it's, it's a good time now, as the superintendent says, to, to be, uh, in, in government because there's funding, especially specifically education, because we're working on foundation budgets. But the minute we hit a recession, we are the ones that get impacted more than any other community. So we're seeing, um, the administration trying to propose the reduction of roughly two million dollars, uh, in revenues because, uh, it, it was politically good to do, expedient, uh, to eliminate purple trash bags. But that's two point three million dollars that we no longer have in this budget. The school department, which I'll get to in a little while, doesn't have nearly what they need to cover the costs that they have. Okay, so we're arguing back and forth between transportation, funding of the schools, funding of the police department, and we're all looking here, and, and then we're going to continue to add on top of grants.
But Council, in, in the case of the fire department, we're tying our men into the EMS division. And specifically, a medical rescue, which is a revenue generating truck.
Right.
So now those revenues can be captured by the fire department to pay for those salaries.
Right.
So that, that was our grand plan, and that's why we went ahead with the, uh, five SAFER positions. Because we did have a long discussion before we decided to take the SAFER grant. How were we going to tie this in and sustain this? Because obviously, as the fire chief, I never want to lay anybody off, whether it's one firefighter or one clerk. That's not my goal.
Right, and I, and I recognize that, but a- again, it's not just the fire department in terms of whether or not you're being fiscally irresponsible. It's the overall budget of the, of the city, right? So it's, it's talking about the sustainability of, of the budget, being able to, um, take in any type of mid-year cuts that may come down, and I'm not saying it's going to happen this year, but if you get a nine-C cut mid-year, regardless if you've been fiscally prudent and, and said that we can sustain this, the fact that the fire department, it's education, police, fire, DPW, those are the largest departments and the largest budgets that we have. So if you're doing a, or looking at a two percent or a five percent reduction, regardless if it's been, you've been fiscally respons, uh, reasonable in your forecasts and, and making sure that you've been, have a lean budget, that, that's where the cuts are going to come from, because that's the only real place that the cuts can come from, that, because that's the largest portion of the budgets, right? So that's the reality of the situation. So I just caution, and, and when we start to, to hear the administration say that we're not using SAFER grants, we're using them for overtime. We're not going to be using them to, to put on new, uh, new bodies. And then we, we see a shift. We see a shift in reducing of revenues. And it just continues to go. It, it's similar to now we're going to hit the taxpayers for the debt exclusion. We're going to cover it in, in the general fund. That's not taking place. So there's a lot of things that we're told that all of a sudden, based on decisions that are being made, are now, are now going in a different direction. And that, and that's all I'm trying to, to say and, uh, articulate here as we're talking about the status of, of the city from a financial standpoint.
Council, just, um, just to avoid any confusion, I, I think what, uh, you may be recalling is when we were talking about the, um, the grants from the state of Massachusetts, um, the EOPS grants, those were the grants that we said we were only going to use for overtime because we weren't sure that those grants were going to be continuing. So I, I think that's was the representation was made relative to those grants, which we've been fortunate. We've received upwards of, uh, nine hundred, uh, thousand dollars from the state. Uh, it is only used for overtime for just that reason, because it's fleeting and we're not certain we can depend upon it. In this particular case, because of the integration, we are one hundred percent confident that those positions can be absorbed, um, and provide additional services. And even with the nine-C cuts, as you've, as you've discussed, the enterprise funds revenues must be used for enterprise-related expenditures. So we don't suffer the same um, uh, problem or threat on the EMS side, and therefore we're confident with the SAFER grant.
Well, I still think my memory's pretty good, and, you know, I remember having a conversation with the former chairperson of public safety, and, and I know she had a couple of meetings where she was talking about SAFER grants and, and just the fact about bodies being hired, but, you know, I'll, I'll move on. Before I, before I get to, uh, the school department, the, the other available, um, funds, the seven million dollars to be received as reimbursements from the enterprise funds, uh, we don't really talk about the enterprise funds all that much. Just curious, has the, or is there any intention to eliminate, eliminate the CSO fee that was suggested at the mayoral debates the past couple of months?
Not in the FY twenty twenty budget.
Not in the FY twenty twenty budget? Okay. So all the, the CSO charges are still going to be charged off to broadly?
They're all in the budgets that you received from, from the water and sewer department.
All right. Uh, in, in terms of education, we, we have stated it's a hundred and one percent of the governor's budget. Um, and I, and I applaud the superintendent because he's, he's been very, very proactive in trying to, to get additional funding, uh, for, for education from the city, not only from the city, but, uh, in particular from the state. I know he's been, um, I've been reading the Commonwealth magazines. He's, he's been pending a lot of, a lot of different letters up, up there, and I, and I appreciate that and applaud that. I guess my, my concern, uh, in terms of the education is that while we, and I appreciate the advocacy for trying to get the funding from the, uh, foundation budget, again, I think we've become too reliant, uh, on the state, and I don't think internally we're doing enough for education. And when I, when I hear statements, you know, the state needs to do what's right, uh, for, for ever, I tend to agree with that. I, I think transportation absolutely should be counted as net school spending, because if you can't get students to school, then you're not educating students, right? And so net school spending at that point doesn't matter. Um, and one of the articles that the superintendent wrote, he, he compared, I think it was, uh, Weston, Mass. or Wellesley, I believe they're, they're doing twenty-four thousand uh, dollars per, per pupil, and we're about ten thousand dollars less, right? That's pretty significant. So in terms of the funding for net school spending and for education, we hear that the one oh one, uh, and it's always based on the governor, on the governor's number, or House One. And I went back, uh, two thousand and fifteen, we're at ninety-seven point seven, uh, percent of net school spending. Twenty sixteen, we're at ninety-eight point nine percent of net school spending. Twenty seventeen, we're at ninety-nine point nine percent of net school spending. Twenty eighteen, we're at, at a hundred percent of net school spending. Twenty nineteen, we're budgeted for a hundred percent of net school spending. We have some transfer, uh, some transfers being made because of healthcare. The state average is a hundred and twenty-eight percent roughly, okay? A hundred and twenty-eight percent above, uh, of, of net school spending, so twenty-eight percent above net school spending. The superintendent, I believe, just said it was roughly twenty communities that are either at a hundred percent or below a hundred percent, give or take.
In between ninety-eight and a hundred and four.
In a hundred and four. So out of three hundred and fifty-one communities, I, I would assume those twenty communities are probably municipalities, right? So it'd be safe to guess.
The rural districts are in the same position as the gateway cities.
Yeah, so, but let's just say, I mean, we've got fifty, fifty-six cities. So we're one of twenty cities roughly, maybe, that are below the net school spending number or at the net school spending number. Um, and, and reading the superintendent's article, uh, he states the absolute need for additional funding for, uh, ELS, um, for additional student services. You know, he talks about how, uh, su, uh, far, for students in, uh, far too many communities who attend schools that, that are woefully underfunded. Then he starts talking about trying to address the rising costs that we see in education these days. Um, and he, and he talks about that it's reached crisis level. And he says forever, in, in his article, forever is one of the many such communities that has, has reached that. And I don't think we're doing enough to fund education. And by the time it's all said and done, we're probably still going to be at a hundred percent of net school spending. And we still, and according to, to him, we need more counseling supports, more special educational professionals, uh, more support professionals. And so my question at the end of the day is, is I think it's, it's nice to go after this, ask the state to give us, and what we deserve in terms of funding to make sure that it's, there's equi, equity and it's equitable. Uh, but at the end of the day, the city needs to start doing something. Uh, again, I, I go back to the, the amount of money that's being given to the, to the schools. It's, it's all of chapter seventy money. Ninety, ninety percent or eighty-five percent of, of the money that's going over there is coming from the state to fund their, uh, their budget. So we have no direct student services or, uh, money is going to the schools that are, that are coming from, from the city. Um, I, I think we need to have a, a stronger conversation about that. I think we need to stop making this a little bit more of a, a priority for the schools so that we're starting to see a little bit more funding, city funding, local receipts and, and different revenue from the city going into the schools for these services. Uh, the class sizes, I'm assuming, are still at thirty while we're looking at other?
Not at the K-two level, and I was real clear about that in the article that we wrote, that the school committee has really prioritized that, and we're twenty-six- that the school committee has really prioritized that, and we're 26 K-2.
Yep. So, again, I mean, I would like to see more advocacy coming from the local level, from our level, between the school committee and the city council and the mayor's office, to really drastically bump this number up. And I know we're talking about a percentage of 1.6 million dollars, but again, I mean, we can go back to the purple bags, you know, that's close to an additional 2% increase on net school spending if we really want to talk about it. So, I think when we look at it, you know, I think everybody would agree that the schools are underfunded. Would you not agree, Mr. Superintendent?
Great question. So, what folks need to understand about school funding, and this is the part that folks, particularly in gateway communities, gateway cities, which there are 26 of in Massachusetts, don't understand, is that what was the great bargain in '93, which was more funding for public education with greater accountability? The great bargain at that point, understand, they made some assumptions in the formula, so they use an algorithm, it's a formula. The formula was based on what, prior to even having computers in school. So, we've been paying for stuff that we need without the additional state revenues that would have covered those costs. Most of the gateway communities are only funded at the foundation level, which is the minimum under the law, because their local tax receipts and their commercial base and their home property values don't allow them the ability under their receipts to be able to fund higher. So, granted, I got in an argument with the superintendent from Holliston, and this gentleman's complaint was, "Well, we can't pit the suburbs and the cities against each other," and he said, "Well, that's a dumb argument to make, because we're not." What we're talking about is equity in kids. Now, they fund their schools at 133%. Now, granted, that's most of their money, but that's because of property value, in Holliston, there's a lot more than a property value here in Fall River. So, we depend on the metrics in the foundation formula. The city can't give me more money unless they receive more money from the state. So, until we fix the foundation budget, all of us are just, you know, I'll keep my Fall River down, if you will, but we're just talking smack. And the reason why is because there aren't additional revenues or unrestricted aid coming to the city. So, for us, these gateway superintendents, and the reason why I've been getting, and you know this, I served as Secretary of Education under Governor Patrick, I'm very good at school finance, and I don't mean to blow myself up like that, but I understand it pretty well for a layperson, although don't ask me what seven times seven is. What we need in these communities is those metrics of the true cost to educate a second language learner from Puerto Rico or a second language learner from Haiti. The true cost of educating that child is more than we receive, both from the state and from the local community. And on top of that, we've got to pay for all the other stuff, like buses and healthcare and all this other stuff, and technology that was never accounted into the formula, and the needs of social emotional learning and counseling when kids experience trauma and poverty. So, those costs become so pervasive that most of the communities in Massachusetts don't have all of the resources that they need to do the job. What we're fighting for, then, is true equity. So, if you ask me, "Do we have everything we need?" No. Guess what? We'll never have everything we need. But do I got the right people? Hell, yeah, I do. And I can add to that, I can put more good people to do good things for kids, and that's the budget that I built. So, if I can get this council to fund me at the requested level that the school committee approved, we will do a hell of a job. If those numbers change and you can do better, we're going to thank you for it, and we're going to do even better job. But at the end of the day, what the money provides us is the actual direct service, that's all. It's not about Taj Mahals and things like that, this is about direct services and resources for kids.
But does the net school spending meet the growing needs of our students?
This is the point of my article. The net school spending doesn't meet it anywhere, and we have to increase the floor. So, what we consider the law from '93, 100% being minimum foundation, that law known as Chapter 70 has to change, and that's what the fight on the hill is. So, right now, I need the House and the Senate to get together and figure out which bill they're going to support and then make it happen.
And I recognize that, but from my standpoint, what we're doing is going hat in hand to the state, saying, "Give us more money," and we're not doing anything at the local level. That's my frustration.
Great question, and it's a great point, but what I am telling you is that particularly when it comes to education, the local level doesn't have any wherewithal to go with that request, because there isn't additional money coming in. So, if we could think about local, and I know you're an MMA guy, right? Not mixed martial arts.
No, I do mixed martial arts.
Mass Municipal Association.
Yeah.
If you think about...
I'm trying to put together a fundraiser, maybe we can get some elected officials in the [inaudible].
I mean, I'll go out here right now if you want. I mean, we, you know, but if you think about, if you think it...
I was talking to somebody on the sixth floor.
I'm not messing with Mr. Long, he's too big. If you think about unrestricted local aid, and why won't, like, what's the one thing that your association begs the governor's office for every year? More unrestricted local free aid. So, you, is the mayor, the CEO of the city, or the town administrator of the town, has more money that they can think about, okay, this year it's fire, this year it's police, this year it's schools? We don't have that. All we have is what we have, which is 2.5% increase and under Prop 2.5, and the receipts that we have, and then any new building, and luckily, we're being creative in this city and looking at new mechanisms of revenue source, that we can then hopefully maybe have more money that's coming in. But on our side, on the ed side, what I need is that the 100% is actually something like 105, and that's what the recommendations are.
But that's the conversation that needs to be had, right? So, this is, we're talking about the strategic planning, the conversations that we don't have. As a joint meeting, we should be having these conversations now, just like we talked about the fire department. If it's 200 firefighters, then what's the level? And I know we want to be at 128, we want to be at 130, but maybe that's not sustainable. But is it 105? And if it's 105, then I think we need to take a stand and say that we want to see a budget at 105.
So, great question.
But just let me finish, but it's not 105 of the governor's numbers, which we know is dead on arrival, it's 105 at the end of the budget. So, whatever that number is, then we need to do it. We need to stop putting our money where our mouths are, right? And I'm not saying for you in particular, but for us as elected officials, to start advocating for education. We too often start looking at different things, and we start to do spending and pay raises and 9% increases and all these contracts, before we start addressing the actual needs and making sure that we've got a benchmark for all our departments as to where they should be, right? We've never had that conversation here, and it's just frustrating to constantly hear, you know, people say, "Oh, we funded education at 101. We funded education at 101. We funded edu..." I mean, how many times has this city council heard from the administration that we funded education at 101% of net school spending? Again, 2015, 97.7, 2016, 98.9, 2017, 99.9, 2018, 100. I have yet to see us funds education at 101% of net school spending.
I think it's important to note that fiscal year 15 and 16 was prior to this administration.
Right.
So, let's make sure that we're providing the factual information.
That's fine, but I'm sure...
And at the time of the budget, at the time of the budget, in 17 and 18, we did meet all of the needs of the school department. Everything that they asked for was met, and we're going to continue to do that, and that's the goal. I mean, you're asking for...
With all due respect, you have your state of the city addresses all the time, and you keep stating...
I have them once a year as required by the charter, not all the time.
Right, that you, okay, pointing on words, but that you meet 101% of net school spending, and we haven't done it. I'm sure the administrations in 15 and 16 weren't saying that they were meeting 101% of net school spending when they weren't meeting 101% of net school spending. All I'm saying is that if that's what we want to do, then let's do it. Let's not tell everybody we want to do 101% of net school spending and not hit that number.
I think it's more complex than that. I think as the year goes on, we move away from that 101% because of other factors. However, we still provided the same amount of money that was required to educate students in the city of Fall River, that was requested by the school committee, as well as the superintendent. It's not like we took away that 1%, it's the math, it's the accounting at the end of the year. You know this, I mean, I think everybody here knows this, so I think it's disingenuous to confuse the public in saying that we're not meeting what we're saying, we are, it's just that that number is a moving target, and I think everybody knows that. I think this administration, along with the school department and the school committee, and this council over the last several years, has made incredible strides to fix some of the longstanding problems that existed with funding education in Fall River. And what the superintendent is now trying to do with the help of the unions, as well as our state legislators, is to change that formula, as you just heard him so eloquently describe, that formula, that floor, needs to be changed. We cannot, and it's not, quite frankly, it's not fair, the taxpayers to look at them and say, "Our property values are so much less than other places like Hingham or whatever it may be, Newton," and say, "You know what? We're going to make this additional commitment of 5% that the state is not going to cover, because they're paying state taxes too." Why should we tell our citizens, "Hey, yeah, we're going to cover more when the state should be providing more?" So, the fight is the fight, and that's what we're doing right now with our legislators and the different parties that are throughout the entire Commonwealth, representing gateway cities, to increase that floor. That is what needs to be done, and as we continue to do that, the city will receive more money, and the city can commit more money, because we need to meet the other 20% that is not funded by the state. That's the way the formula works, and that is what this administration and future administration should strive to achieve.
It's a great pivot, but at the end of the day, we're not meeting, and what's...
Counselor, you think everything is a pivot, there's reality here, and there are factors that we have to fund all parts of city government. It's not a pivot, it's the factors that are facts.
Counselor? Thank you. So, and the reason I think everything is a pivot is because I just explained it again, the debt exclusion, right? So, we're told one thing, something else happens.
So, you're pivoting to something else now?
Counselor, I'm trying to explain to you why I think everything is a pivot, because this administration constantly comes down to, not only this council, and I won't speak for the school committee, says one thing, does another thing. And then when we start having these arguments that this is what's going to happen, we're told that we're all crazy. So, the disingenuousness is the fact that we're being told that we're going to be at 101% of net school spending. 101% net school spending is 101% net school spending. Not 101% of net school spending of the governor's numbers, it's of the final numbers. So, again, if we're going to commit to that, we're going to commit to that, but we've beat net school spending up enough, and that's just my stance, I just don't think that we need to constantly go after the state when 53% of our revenue is already coming from the state. I think we need to do a better job of generating some additional revenues internally to make sure that our departments have the money.
Counselor, I don't disagree with you at all. I totally agree, and that's why we've achieved additional revenues that do not come out of the taxpayers' pockets. Your philosophy would be to have kept the purple bags, which is just an additional fee above and beyond the 2.5%, which we can only do by law. So, there's only so many places we can go for revenues, as you know. So, even if we kept purple bags, for example, and generate that additional 1.9 million dollars after expenses, that's it. There's not additional pots of, we're going to create another fee to circumvent 2.5? That's never going to achieve the actual true cost of educating students in the city of Fall River. That is why it's very important, and I totally disagree with you in terms of the funding that we asked the state for on education specifically, because it is not fair to students in Fall River, especially these English as a second language learning students, these students that are living in poverty, to not achieve more resources from our state government based on their zip code. That is not fair. The state needs to change the formula to allow cities like Fall River and our sister cities, Brockton, New Bedford, and other gateway cities, more share of the education dollars within the state. And that's, just using common sense, the property values in Fall River are not as high as those other communities, and our student population is more needy. So, that's what I think we're all trying to achieve on the state level, and once we achieve that, we have to have a unified voice on that, on that issue on Beacon Hill, then I think you'll see some of our school department needs be truly met.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, you're just debating the wrong individual. So, to say that it's unfair to charge a fee for the purple bags, you eliminate that, and what did you essentially do? We went to the debt exclusion, and you just charged the taxpayers money, because we have a debt exclusion two years earlier, because we don't have enough revenue in our operating budget within the 2.5 levy.
No, incorrect.
That's exactly what was just said by this administration.
Incorrect, Counselor.
Ms. Sahadi, why are we...
The citizens of Fall River...
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Lecan, you have the floor, you directed a question to Mrs. Sahadi.
Mrs. Sahadi, why are we going to debt exclusion earlier than the two years that was told by this administration?
At the current time, looking at the expenditures and the needs to include the transportation budget, we will need the additional dollars as revenue source in the budget.
Okay. Did you eliminate the bag revenue from, the trash bag revenue?
Yes.
Okay. So, are you shifting essentially from a fee where you would have generated 2.1 million dollars, and you're generating how much in the debt exclusion?
2.1 million dollars.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. That's not a shift, I don't know what a shift is.
It's not a shift, Counselor. The citizens of Fall River voted, voted for a new Darby High School, they voted for a debt exclusion. They never voted and never had the opportunity to vote for purple bags. They are two different sources of revenue. That's the reality of the situation, and we are still trying to achieve, and that's why the numbers are very, we have to be very cautious tonight, the numbers are not final. If transportation savings can occur, which is not a net school spending eligible expense, that number may not be the reality in the final budget. We are putting placeholders to give you the most transparent process tonight, but leveraging that process to suggest that we did a shift is, again, not the purpose of tonight's meeting and should not be led or misleading of the public's trust in this particular situation.
The other difference, too, is that the debt exclusion would be shared by every taxpayer, where the bags were only by the individuals purchasing them, so it was really skewed to the residents.
Well, technically, if it was enforced properly, everybody that was throwing out trash should have been paying their fees. Now, everybody...
Not the commercial, though.
Exactly.
Outside of the commercial, but now you're going to have, and this is the last point, and I don't want to go back and forth on this, because I do want to get back to transportation, but now you have property owners, solely property owners, seeing a significant increase in their tax bill, two years earlier than what we said. We said it was supposed to be 10 years, but, you know, if it's not a shift, it's not a shift. If people want to believe that, that's fine. In terms of the transportation and the bids that went out, what's the city prepared to pay for in terms of the bottom line dollar? I mean, you know what we can afford...
We are not prepared to make the commitment of that number tonight.
What we can afford.
And tonight's not, tonight's, this is not the purpose of tonight, and we will not commit to a number tonight. We are still working with Mr. Pacheco and the different vendors, and we're not prepared to commit to a number, nor would we want to give any particular vendor a tip off of what we are willing to pay in this public forum.
You wouldn't be tipping anything, anybody off.
We'd like to achieve a certain amount of savings, so we don't want to commit to any final number tonight.
What the city can afford to pay is different than what the school committee is willing to pay for transportation, right? So, I'm asking what the city is prepared to pay for transportation.
Counselor, we don't want to commit to a number.
Counselor, we don't have that information for you here tonight, because, as you know, there are a number of other budgets within city government that could potentially change depending on the needs, as well as the school operating budget, and so, we're not able to really tell you what the dollar value that we're prepared to include in the 2020 budget for transportation.
So, just in terms of the transportation budget, when you folks went out, and so, I don't know, you're not looking to negotiate, and I just want to clarify, all the regular service, everything outside of special ed that's required under Chapter 30B to be bid, you're not negotiating those contracts?
Outside of special ed?
Outside of special ed. So, special ed is the only contracts that you're negotiating?
We're not prepared to sign any of the contracts that have been bid right now until we do that analysis as to how much, how many routes we're going to be able to, I don't want to say routes, how many buses we're going to be able to eliminate.
Yeah.
The consolidation of those bus routes are critical to us coming up with a bottom line, and that can't be, that can't be done. The other portion of this, obviously, we're looking to tier buses more than we currently do. The whole idea of going out to bid the way we did was to give us that option. We don't have the option in the current system to do as much tiering as we possibly can. So, the ultimate goal is to tier as many of these schools as we can, and besides reducing some of those routes due to maybe some inefficiencies that we did not pick up in the current contracts.
So, I would just, my own opinion, I agree with Counselor on C-7, I would throw out the bids and rebid, and I would do alternates, so if you want the GPS, if you want the cameras in there, I would obviously prioritize those and come in as alternates to see exactly the lowest bid that you can get for the services of the bus, and then have the contractors come in and give you a price of, well, if you want GPS, if you want cameras, if you want, and I don't know, you know, newer than 10 years old, or five, or whatever the case may be, what that cost would be, and then obviously prioritize it, and then based on the funding mechanism, you can add those alternates in. I mean, it's, that's just something I would suggest, because if we've got a significant concern about going from 8.5 or 9 million dollars to 11 million dollars, I think that's what we should do on top of the negotiation of the special ed. With that, Eels.
Thank you. Counselor on C-3, Counselor Kamara.
Counselor C.3, Counselor Kamara.
Thank you. I just want to be sure that I have my figures right on this. What is the proposed budget for the school department in the fiscal year 20 that was adopted recently, last few days?
So, the operating appropriation is 106, 642, 648 million dollars.
106?
106.
Okay.
642,000, 648 dollars.
106 million?
Yeah.
And what is the city's portion?
Well, the total
That would be the city's portion at 101%.
No, I want to know the whole state's
Oh, the state aid, 52 million.
Because percentages have been thrown out, 90% is funded through the state, 10% funded through the city, I heard 86% at one point, 14% from the city, so I'm trying to get a real sense of what that figure is. So, what is the total full amount of funds the school department is seeking to operate under in fiscal year 20?
All right, so, again, I'm going to go to the numbers that I know that makes sense.
Okay.
All right. At 100%, the net school spending minimum figure in fiscal year 20 is $159,71,986, but we've asked for 101%, which is the total figure of
160.
Of one, yeah, why don't we have it on here?
At the top.
Oh, I'm sorry, of $160,662,706, which represents our operating costs and the city's contribution known as indirects or Schedule 19 in state lingo.
Okay, and so, not from the state, but from the city taxpayers, what is the amount of money that goes to this budget?
So
I heard something at some point of 52 million, is that wrong?
Of our budget, 80%, 80.48 as of today's Ways and Means numbers, or yesterday's, 80.48% is state dollars, and the local contribution is 19.52% of that 160.
Okay, and does Ms. Sahadi concur with that 20%?
I don't have those figures in front of me, but I'm assuming the math was done correctly. But we're really looking at it, and I hate to confuse it even further, but what the council's concerned with and what we're concerned with is what the appropriation is going to be, the 106 million or the 105 million, because in that $52 million includes the assessments as well. So, it's not all city contribution. The city contribution is the retirement portion, it's the indirects as it relates to the per pupil costs, it's the health insurance, also in that 52 million are the assessments, so
So, just if I may interrupt then, so at a minimum, at a minimum, the state is providing 80% and local taxpayers are providing approximately 20%. Now, there's some argument to be made logically that there are some additional amounts of money that the city is picking up that are actual school department expenditures, so it's actually more than 20% when you take into those figures. Is that something acceptable and agreeable to everybody that the city? Because I've heard, and you hear this all the time, you know, people will say, the state's picking up 100% of the bill to pay for the school department, or the city's paying today was 90% was the figure that was most emphasized, but now I hear that it's 80%, but actually it's less than 80% because there's some additional cost that the city is absorbing. And I'm a big promoter of school department getting as much money, I was part of a school committee that had fiscal autonomy, so you got as much money as you wanted because the school committee voted for it, and nobody could refuse or reject the amount of money that the school committee voted for. That was the day, a day that quickly went away.
Sounds awesome.
But that was the day. So, I'm not trying to put this into a box. All I want is the taxpayers to understand that the city of Fall River pays more than 10% of the school department budget through its local tax revenue. It's more like 20% and likely more than that. So, I'd like to get that actual figure so that we can project to the public what is the local contribution to the funding of our educational system. Everything, retirement, health costs, transportation costs, everything else, money that goes to the charter schools, money that goes to the public schools. What is the breakdown percentage? Okay, let that go, I just want that at some point into the future. What I do want to do is pivot, a new concept I've never used, but I do want to pivot to something that I think is clean and clear, and both the mayor and the superintendent have made a point of emphasizing this, and I want to reemphasize this, that a zip code should not determine the funding for a child's education. Fall River's zip codes result in our kids getting less money than other kids get in other zip codes that have a broader property tax to fund their educational system, and God bless those other systems, but that's what social injustice and economic injustice is all about. The state of Massachusetts should fund education in a fairer way, and that's why this educational foundation legislation is so key, and I would agree with my colleague who suggested that we need to get together, but we need to get together not to squeeze more money out of the Fall River taxpayer, the Fall River property taxpayer, by reinstituting purple bags and squeezing out those people who can't afford purple bags, or in raising our property taxes or our water and sewer bills to a place where Fall River taxpayers and rent payers can't afford to do that. We need to organize and make sure that the MTA and the Mass School Board Association, the MSBA, and the MMA, and all the other efforts that are lobbyist efforts. Now, we've managed in Fall River to be very short sighted, we bury our heads in the sand and say, don't send the nine of us to Boston on a regular basis to advocate for better funding, take all that money out of our budget, don't give us any in-state travel so that we can go lobby. Rather, what we do is we leave it to the wealthier communities to go lobby for their interest, and we get left behind. Fortunately, we have the Superintendent's Association and our superintendent, we have our mayor, and we have his involvement with the mayor's municipal association. They are advocating, but we should be doing more, and we're not doing it, and that's a detriment, and that's something that this city council, again, back at, no one likes to talk about the history, but the history was that, and Mrs. Viveras and I remember those days, that we would regularly go as a group to Boston, and we would advocate not only among our own legislators, but the whole state legislative group, that we need better funding sources for our cities and towns. So, I don't feel that we're too reliant on the state. I think that we are lacking reliance on the state. We're letting the state off its obligation to give every child in Massachusetts an equal opportunity to have a good foundation, to get a good education. Again, superintendent was formerly a commissioner, a secretary under Governor Deval Patrick's administration. When Governor Patrick left office, and he was a man I greatly admired, he said his greatest regret in his tenure as governor was that he did not give property taxpayers relief. That was his greatest failing, because he recognized that property tax should not be the funding source for the people of Massachusetts. It should not be the primary funding source. It's the most regressive form of funding. The state tax, a progressive income tax, is a fairer way to go. The state needs to get more revenue from those who can afford to pay so that struggling cities, and Massachusetts has many struggling cities, 30-plus gateway cities, have more revenue to do the job that they need to do so our kids get a fair shake. Our kids aren't getting a fair shake, and it's not because we're not tapping our own taxpayers, because as was stated, we're taxed out. We know that the reason why purple bags disappeared was not to be, not a pivot, not to do a quick political action, although it did provide some political benefit, I think. However, the primary reason why it went, and the primary reason why I advocated that it be eliminated, as I did also promote the elimination of the household fee, was because they were the most regressive fees that we had. They most affected poor people. Now, I happen to work with a lot of poor people. I have real estate where there are poor people that live in my real estate, and I know that they couldn't afford the purple bags. They would tell me, I've got to get the food, I've got to get the clothing, I've got to get, you know, basic needs, my medications. I know that they weren't shaking me down because I would aggravate them about buying purple bags, but they just couldn't afford those purple bags. So, let's end that purple discussion, and let's end the fantasy that somehow the state is giving us something that we don't deserve. The state is not giving us enough. The state needs to understand that there is something called economic injustice, and the economic injustice that exists in our school department is because the state is not meeting its responsibility. So, if this group wants to lead with the president and become better advocates, and I give the president credit because I know he has been involved at his own expense in going to MMA activities, but we need to do more to advance the educational foundation, and we need to do it in conjunction with all our partners, the MTA, the educators' associations, the Mass Municipal Association, the administrators' association, the superintendent's association, and the gateway cities, so that we get into that network. And I've gone to Boston meetings on my own to advocate for this, I've been to many meetings that deal with promoting educational foundation improvements, and we need to continue to do more of that. So, let's, I say, get away from saying, let's get more money out of the local taxpayers. The local taxpayers are pinched, they're going to be getting an increase, 2.5% plus increases in their water and sewer bills. We don't need to be talking anymore about getting any more from our property taxpayers and our rent payers. Let the state come through with its obligations. Let the people who can afford to pay, let that millionaire's tax be adopted so that we can stop funding education and transportation, another weak link in our Commonwealth's needs is the transportation end. And let's stop scapegoating the taxpayers of Fall River who are giving what they can toward our system, but they can't be expected to give any more. And without a yield.
Thank you, Counselor. And C.5, Counselor Vice President LaBeau.
I just have a couple of questions on a few things that were said on the floor tonight. First question is for you, Chief. An optimum, I'm sorry, a minimum of 200 full-time, that's the goal?
That was the goal, yes.
And an optimum of maybe 215, 216, is that still the goal?
That's going to be a very, very long-range plan, if at all.
So, we have the 195 number that you said, that's with the 18 that are going into the academy?
That's affirmative.
So, that's 13 that'll be in the budget and five on the SAFRA grant, the portion of that
That's right, yep.
So, you'll be at 195, but 15 of those are only 50% of the time, correct? Because they are also EMS combination?
Yes, between the squad and the impact truck, which is the medical rescue nine, which would be another medical rescue we're putting into service.
So, really, we're still only at about, if they're 50% of the time, 187 and a half firefighters?
Roughly, yeah.
Correct. And I know EMS pays for it, I know that's what we're trending toward, and that's why we're doing that, but we are still 13 below where we want to be?
You could say that, but right now, we're at a pretty good place. I mean, most of the fires we go to, we're doing a great job with the manpower we have.
Right.
And you have to understand that those firefighters are assigned to the squad, even though that's a medical rescue squad, if there is a fire, they become firefighters.
At the scene.
At the scene.
Okay. Thank you. My next question, the debt exclusion for Derby. Mrs. Sahadi, you said that was going to be in the upcoming fiscal years.
What I said is that we're still working on the 2020 budget at this particular point, particularly in light of the $11.9 million transportation number that has come in, it is now included as a placeholder in the 2020 budget.
Okay, so
But we're still working on the budget.
I understand, but I just did a quick Google search while I was sitting here because everything that was said on the council floor, social media, the radio, newspapers, when there was pros and cons, when people were going to vote, when is it going to affect us? 2023, 2023, 2023. And I understand if transportation's coming in higher, and they're working on that, but to then do it three years earlier is really unfair and disingenuous to everybody that went out and voted on that because perhaps they would have voted differently.
Well, I would like to think that people wouldn't because there was a need for a new Derby High School, and again, we're not being disingenuous, there is still, within the time, to pay that loan off over the next 20 years for us to absorb any of those funds within the budget. People are seeing a savings by not having to spend, you know, whatever they were spending, whatever that number is, on purple bags.
Right, but that was everybody spending money on purple bags.
That's not true, it's not everybody spending money on purple bags.
It wasn't just homeowners that are going to get the tax bill, homeowners are going to get the tax bill.
Homeowners will get the debt exclusion tax bill as well as businesses.
Right, but what about all of the renters? Everybody was supposed to be paying for that.
But that's not accurate, that's not an
It's not accurate, so was only homeowners paying for the purple bags?
No.
And I'm not arguing for against purple bags, my point is, this bill is going to
To homeowners, property owners, homeowners, and corporations that own property.
Fine, but you said everybody, but tenants aren't getting this property tax bill.
Well, they are through their rents, the people that pay rent.
If the landlords, then the landlords have to jack their rents up.
Correct, that's the way it goes.
And they're already through the roof. I just think it's not fair to the people when it was said over and over and over and over again, 2023, 2023, 2023, that it's now possibly 2020. It's not fair.
Well, the other alternative is to cut transportation, cut education, cut public safety, cut some of the areas that this council wants to go forward with and increase the budget. You can't have it both ways.
No, you can't have it both ways, but it's not fair to tell people one thing.
Well, let's
At the time, there was no indication that the transportation budget was going to increase as much as it's increasing, so we only have estimates at the time. So, at the time, it was a true statement that it was the intention of this administration not to include the debt service for the short-term borrowing in the tax bills in 2020.
Until 2023. I'm just making a point. And my last question is about transportation and
If I may, Madam Vice President, I think the frustration from the council here, and I know a couple of councils raised the concern, I think we're all here. It's pretty clear that it was said to the community and to the city council when we were going to start seeing the impacts on the debt exclusion. It's changed. I get the fact that transportation is going up, you know, shifting gears, et cetera, but it was said here, so we're not going to circumvent the fact that presentations were made by various individuals and has said that the debt exclusion is going to take effect in 2023.
Counselor President, and it was also said that we were going to have a consultant that was going to save transportation money. So, I mean, things are said, and that's why these are living documents, that change over time. We tonight are still not saying that there will absolutely be a debt exclusion bill that goes out, and I think it's important to maybe put the dollar value that we've calculated for that debt exclusion, it's somewhere in the $59 to $61 on average that a person's going to see as a bill versus the potentially $120 they were spending on purple bags, or whatever it may have been, because this burden, the debt exclusion that was approved by the taxpayers in a vote, is spread amongst all property owners. So, I think that's important to note as well.
And, Miss Mayor, I agree with you, and I understand transportation has gone up, but there was a presentation made, times have changed, you hired a consultant, spent X amount of money, or the school department hired a consultant, spent X amount of money, and they didn't save you any money, they actually cost you more money, as Mr. Aguirre has indicated at the school committee meeting several times. So, I know things are changing, but, you know, these are questions that councilors are asking, and I think the consensus for what I'm hearing from a number of councilors that if you're going to be presenting a budget to this council that indicates a debt exclusion in the next fiscal year, it might be a challenging budget time for this council. So, this is information gathering as well, but, you know, something was said, and I think the councilors, which our roles are to hold people accountable, it's going to be a challenging, or maybe it won't be, we'll allow the administration and the finance team and Mr. Pacheco time to try to negotiate down that transportation number, but I gather that's going to be a challenge. Madam Vice President?
So, my last question is about transportation. Mr. Pacheco, you said that you were looking at inefficiencies that weren't originally picked up and combining routes, could you just explain that a little bit? Could you just explain that a little bit?
So, for instance, some of the argument that we hear, or frustration more than argument from parents who are looking to get their students on buses, is that three or four buses for public schools may go by their house. And some of those efficiencies that we're talking about is the fact that we had six different bus companies, which we weren't able to say to a bus company, "You're going to pick up students from Viveris, for Spencer-Borden, and for another school," because that's not how the bid was put together. The bid was put together that the bus companies were able to pick and choose which items they were gonna bid on, and then we couldn't tier them. We wouldn't, we weren't allowed to mix and match. What the new contract is gonna allow us to do is it's broken down by category. So typical students are gonna ride a bus. Special needs students are gonna ride a bus. And our sports runs, which have no bearing on this particular, obviously, they're gonna be on their own. And then the van pieces, again, done by one vendor. So each category of bus transportation is now broken up with one vendor. We've never had that.
And then that was because of changes to the RFP?
That's one of, yes, it is. That's the way the RFP was written. And the other part of the efficiency is the tiering. So by changing some bell schedules, or by just looking at the routes a little better, and taking a citywide look at transportation, we're gonna be able to pick up maybe two schools, and in some cases, depending on the age group, three schools.
And drop off at different schools?
So they won't be picked up at the same time, but there's enough, there'll be enough time in between each one that a bus would be leaving Spencer-Borden, for instance, going to the next school, starting that route, and then dropping those students off. So the bell schedules would be offset more than they are now. Now we currently have five or six schools that the bell schedules are identical. That creates that issue where we can't use those buses for anything else because of the schedules.
So is that gonna help what the mom that was down here, Mrs. Riley, said this evening? She has a five-year-old.
So Mrs. Riley is a special, it's a special case because of the location of the building, the location of her home. We're sending buses to the reservation, Copacott Reservation, basically, and there's no way to make that ride shorter except by not picking up any other routes in order to get that bus a straight shot. If we could cut through the reservation, that would be a different story, but we're going through 195, we're going through Reed Road, Dartmouth, cutting into Copacott and driving a mile or so down Copacott, if not more, to get to Mrs. Riley's. And then that, repeat that on the way back. So any kind of hiccup in that stop-
But there has to be more than one child in the Copacott going to school?
Going to that particular school in that particular area, that may be the only stop. There may be just two. So if we add in the middle school, because we're going up there to pick up students for Talbot also, so now when you put the Talbot ride into it, the Talbot school starts so much earlier than Sylvia, well, not so much earlier, but enough that that student now has to ride the bus a little longer.
And that student, and if he's the only one, also waits at Sylvia 35 minutes after school before he gets on the bus?
Because we're picking up another school.
So-
So again, that situation is, we're gonna handle that situation a little differently, and I've had the conversation with Mrs. Riley, that next year, there'll be additional in-house buses. So we have 70 licensed buses that, we currently have three, we'll be adding two to that fleet, which we're gonna be able to keep that in-house. Keeping it in-house is gonna save us the $40,000 contract for that bus.
We also have heard from parents that have children in the GATE program, they get picked up. They're also getting picked up at 6:00 in the morning, and they don't start school till 7:30.
Sure, because the GATE bus is traveling from one end of the city to the other. So again, it's a matter of, sometimes we're providing services only in one school, and we're transporting from, for students from other particular districts. So we're transporting students who would normally go to the Sylvia school, we're transporting them to CUS. Students who would go to the Watson or another school, we're transporting them the other side of the city.
But then we have kids right up in the Highlands, right in the middle of everything that are going to Sylvia, and they're still getting picked up at 6:00.
Because it's the same bus. So it's the same bus that's traveling.
Is that gonna be addressed as well?
Yes. So when we do the, it's an entire city rerouting, and we're gonna pick up all of those issues that we currently have and try and address them, so that we're keeping our time limit on the buses as close, a lot less than the hour on some instances, but as close as we possibly can, so that all the students are not having to that 45-minute to an hour ride on the buses.
Oh, wait, that's a really long day for kids.
It is. Especially on the extended day.
Yeah, Sylvia's only an extended day.
Yes.
And the other things that you had just mentioned quickly, and I think I got them all, no bus more than 10 years old, how old are the buses now that are?
I couldn't tell you everyone's buses. I do know we have buses that are in operation that are over 10 years old.
And what was the reason for that, adding that in?
Just reliability and, again, general safety, you know? There's a lot of issues that are coming down the road in transportation, seat belts, things like that, that we're going to have to address as they come. But obviously, if buses are being manufactured today, they're already being manufactured with some of these upgrades. So it was, it's basically, doing with the 10 years is allowing companies to have an opportunity to have time to get on with the new regulations.
And GPSs, the buses don't have GPSs now?
They do not. And 50%, if not more, of our buses have no cameras, and some have one camera. None of our buses have three.
And that's what we're asking for, is three?
We're asking for three. And that is a safety issue more than anything else, because there's a lot of, when we have a bus situation, the story we hear, obviously, from the student and the parent, is a lot different than the story that happened on the bus. Not always, but that happened on the bus. As soon as a camera, if that bus has a camera, there's no doubt as to what happened. And most of those issues are exactly what, you know, we thought they were. On the other hand, we wouldn't tomorrow take all our cameras out of our schools because they were too much money. We wouldn't go through that. In fact, we're doing just the opposite. So I think that the cam, there are certain things that, as I said, if it's my decision, the cameras would stay. It's not my decision. But it's one of the items that I think are very important, and I think the GPS is also. In a city that, at times in the summer months, we have construction in, you know, 20% of the city going on. So buses are the most affected by the situation because of routes and trying to get students home on streets that may be under construction or in areas that may be under construction. So if a parent knows that that bus should be at that bus stop at 3:23, and that bus, it's now 3:40 and there's no bus, they're gonna be able to find out where that bus is with, you know, on their cell phone.
And then, just out of curiosity, do all buses have bus monitors?
I wanna say 95% of all of our buses have monitors.
That I yield, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, to your school committee?
Okay, thank you. All right, school committee, if we have any questions?
I got a question.
Mr. Kugan?
When I see this, Mary, this additional money, jumping that tax up two years early, I was a strong advocate for the school. I remember standing on the corner with Committeeman Aguirre and people making phone calls, and we told everybody at every neighborhood meeting I went to, and Steve and I went all over the city, and our message was always the same, "The tax won't start till 2023." He just said, "We're squeezing, we're squeezing, we're squeezing people. Now we're gonna jump the tax up two years? We're gonna jump the tax up two years? Is there gonna be a press conference announcing that?" Because I think it's that important, that people were sold the bill of goods. We did go out and say that, and I did tell people they had time to plan. And now, as my colleague over there, Mr. Camaro, was saying, "We're squeezing people, we're squeezing them, we're gonna jump another tax onto them, which is over the 2.5%. Two years early?" When I know what I said to people, I was a strong advocate for the school. I told them it didn't start till 2023.
Once again, I think the question was already answered. That is a placeholder, that is not a final number. The budget will be presented with the final numbers. The debt exclusion was voted upon by the citizens. It's always been an obligation that the citizens will pay for the Durfee High School project. However, if we can achieve savings in other areas, or over the next several years, we predict, over five years, 10 years, 20 years, alternative revenue sources from cannabis, billboards, indoor advertisement, as was explained in the presentation, will make up significant resources to allow us to not have to continue to charge people. There is no other administration that has been focused on reducing fees and burdens on taxpayers. This is the only administration I can find in the history of Fall River and in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that has given back the amount of money we've given back in terms of fees. That's a reality, that's a fact.
So it's my position that when you throw the tax on two years early, you are imposing a fee, you can call it a tax or a fee, and if it's on this paper, then someone in your administration thought it was a good idea to go forward with it. And all I'm saying is, in the sake of consistency, is you come out and have a press conference and say, "We needed additional money, I'm gonna throw the tax in early." Because I know what I said, and I'll take my responsibility, because I told people it was 2023, and I know City Councilor Camaro would have to echo that, because he followed us around to these neighborhood meetings, taking a different position, but now we're gonna tell people that, by the way, we need additional money, and to try to do it on the backs of the bus people, to me, is like saying, "You said we've saved money in healthcare, why don't you just put that money to the buses?" It's my position, you're taking this tax.
Because healthcare money, Mr. Kugan, as you know, or should know, is net school spending in buses or not. That's why we can't take health insurance money and shift them.
The city is saving money on health insurance also, as you interrupt me, but it's my position that if that's the, if you wanna do it on the backs of the kids and the buses and say "Transportation went up," when we don't even have the final number yet, to put this on a piece of paper is irresponsible unless you go and have a press conference and say, "I made a mistake, and I'm gonna grab the money early," which would be the honest way to handle it. This way is sliding it through, saying, "Well, we didn't really mean it, but we put it on the paper to hold a place." I just think that's irresponsible. And I know what I told taxpayers of this city, and I'm not gonna change my message. I did tell them it was 2023, and for you to jump it two years is just, to me, right out of another planet, and I do yield.
Mr. Kugan, so a couple of things. First and foremost, it is on this piece of paper as a placeholder, just like the school committee on Monday night voted the $11.9 million as a placeholder. There are times at this stage of the budget process that placeholders are presented. This, right now, is on public television. This can act as your press conference that you're talking about. We are being very transparent. We're coming forward to our city council, to our school committee, and we're saying, "This is the number," because 35%, there was a 35% increase in the initial bids, which the school committee on Monday night approved as a placeholder. We're working very diligently to reduce that number, and when the final budget is presented, that will be the time when there'll be a press conference explaining all the factual numbers. Not tonight, when it's all preliminary, as a transparent discussion about the situation and the financial outcome that the city faces over the next several months going into the 2020 budget. That's it. So we'll go on.
But no, that's not it. It's my position, and you put, I didn't see anybody give you the floor, it's my position, you put a number on a piece of paper and tell people it's a placeholder. We had to vote on the transportation budget. This bill isn't due till 2023. So if you told me we voted on the transportation budget that was due in 2023, I'd agree with you. But our transportation budget is due now. This bill was sold to the taxpayers as a 2023 bill, and now you're jumping it up two years or putting it on the paper alleging you may do it.
We're not.
But now, it's all of a sudden, it's gonna be pulled back because you got called out on it, and not by me, by someone on the city council that picked it up. I picked it up after, I was late to the dance, I'll admit it. But that's flat-out outrageous, to sell a bill of goods to the taxpayers and then jump it two years.
You yield, Mr. Kugan?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Aguirre?
Just a couple of questions. The, I know one of the councilors was talking about people advocating around the state, and I can say that Teachers Union President Rebecca Cusick is around the state more than anybody, and I don't want it to go unnoticed, that she's fighting every day, she's at every meeting, and it's not catering to the Teachers Union. This lady really works hard, and she should be commended for that and not slighted, like as if she's not doing her job, or we're not doing her job here. She represents 700 teachers, she's doing a heck of a job at it, so kudos to her on that. The transportation is an issue. I know we're going back and forth, but we talked about this Monday night at the meeting, that the system of how we do transportation here is screwed up. So I have one seat on the school committee that have to vote on the transportation number, and we don't pay the bill. The council and the mayor have to pay the bill. So we get presented with information, and we will lie to or misled by a consultant, whoever said that, they were 100% right, that we were gonna save money. I said that Monday night. But the problem is, we're gonna have to try and vote on something and then send it to the council. Why not just send it to the council and give it to the city right off the bat and say, "You know what, it's your issue to deal with." Because I can guarantee you, if that number came in to this council, those bids would have been thrown out on Monday night. But we decided to, let's just put it, I lost the vote, we're gonna go with 11.9 as a placeholder and supposedly negotiate, which we got different information today. So everyone's upset about it, and they should be. We're transporting the same number of students that we transported last year, no different number, and it's costing us 33% more. We had a regular ed bid that came in, last year we spent $1 million. This year, the bid came in at $2.6 million. That's 160% increase. For those bids not to be thrown out, I don't understand what that was all about. But it can't go on. So if you guys wanna throw it out, I would say you guys should make a motion to say, "Throw the bids out," because we could get better. I don't believe anybody, when they say it's gonna be higher, how much higher can it be? They're not, that's crazy. We could do, we could do a better job of doing that issue. The issue of the 101% and 100%, I understand fully the issues that the city faces, financial and the like. My position on that is, if we're gonna say that we wanna pass a budget that's 100% at the minimum of education spending and not make it a priority to go above that number, we all in this joint meeting should get together and say, "Let's take a vote of who wants to make a priority of just the basic 100% of net school spending." There's arguments to be made for that to be the case, even though we have needs. Instead, we keep going back and forth to say, "It's 101, it's 100, it's 100.4 today, it was 101 yesterday." It doesn't make any sense. If we wanna say and give direction to the administration, direction to the council, say fund it at 100%, so be it. But when we talk about that, same thing, whether we put money in, there's another part of money called Medicaid reimbursement, that the money comes out of the school budget that we pay for all these services, and that money, to the tune of $1.5 million, goes back to the city. So the money comes out of the school budget, goes back to the city as a reimbursement, and it does not get categorized in that 100% figure anywhere, anywhere. So if we get to the bottom line, like the numbers that Council on Seat One said, and it's just basically at 100%, you have to deduct the $1.5 million that you get in Medicaid reimbursement, so we're really at 98%. And that's not being critical of this administration, that's just being a reality, speaking reality, that's the fact. So if we wanna fund education and make it a priority, that's why I was advocating on Monday, to put a higher number, to make a point that it's a priority that we're gonna go above the bare minimum. The committee chose not to do that, so be it. Thankfully, we do have some resources coming in that we can help. With that being said, the transfer for the healthcare, we've got $1 million already. Can I ask when the rest of the transfer is gonna be for other, but it is getting, you know, two months closer to the final? Do we have a new number? Maybe Mr. Elmer or Mrs. Sahadi?
I updated the information through March 31st, and there'll be at least another million.
One million?
Could be two. I'm still, I'm very conservative. I am very conservative at calculating the amount, because it is unbelievable when you look at the savings this year. And then the question becomes, what are we using for a base for next year? Do we throw out this year? I mean, we had 2016, I think it was, where the school department's healthcare was almost $3 million, $2.6 million over the estimate. So I'm very conservative with regard to where we're at. With regard to another transfer, I would think it would probably come in the May timeframe, because you do have to have the ability to, I hate to say spend it, but at least appropriate it or have purchase orders for projects. So I would suggest to the school committee that they start thinking about where they might need to spend or might want to spend some of those dollars. I mean, we obviously pay health claims through the month of August, because the May bill comes in in July, and the June bill comes in in August, so realistically, the final transfer will be after year-end. But there's another significant savings that is continuing in through the month of March, so.
So if it's, Mr. Almeida, is that, you concur between one and two million, or you have a vote number?
I, I would say it's between probably 1.5 to 1.8, somewhere in, in that range for this year.
If I could make a recommendation that, and I think this is how it would go, because that's not money that's coming out of stabilization or anything else.
It is not. We will transfer it from our healthcare appropriation line to the education. And, and quite honestly, we will have to make the final transfer before the end of the fiscal year because we wouldn't want the surplus to close out into free cash.
Yeah. So if I can make a recommendation that the, the school administration, or the city administration, to come up with a reasonable number, maybe 50% of the, what you actually predict or something, and get that to the council right away so that we, on the school committee, don't meet again until May, the beginning of May. So it would make sense, in my mind, knowing that we all know it's going to be there, to make that, whatever has to happen to get a council, so that in May, we would actually have the ability to make that vote. Because there is needs that we have in the current school year, that we could spend one-time monies on and do things that are better for kids, like everybody wants to do. So I would highly encourage that process to sort of, and obviously, you can't go to the whole thing because of this, it's spiked, but we all know it's going to be real money.
Oh, yeah.
So whatever you can do, you know, for that, I would appreciate. And the only other question I had was, I, I was not really totally getting the 4% of the projects that, you know, the mayor mentioned that that was good in, was it around the debt service? The 4% issue in that?
Yes.
Can you explain that again?
Yeah. Currently, where, where our debt service principal in interest is about $10 million a year, and that's about 4%, of the total operating budget, which is a low percentage when we look at gateway cities of our size. Now, if we increased it, so, you know, using, using your colleague, Mr. Coogan, and put the $2 million in for the debt service, then what would really happen is we still don't have a revenue source. So we can, we met yesterday with, with Mr. Pacheco and Mr. Gallagher over the accelerated repair program and what school projects are coming down. But we have to look at those school projects together with what our debt service will be in order to keep our debt service within the $10 million. So just yesterday, we, we talked about Watson, right? Watson. We just, we talked about Watson being part of the repair program that we need to come to city council and get that bond authorization because, as you know, that project was broken up between the ADA portion and the portion that's not ADA. And to this date, we have not presented that to the city council for their vote for authorization. Now, we know there are additional projects that are, that are in the pipeline with regard to both West Oil and the RPA. They're in the feasibility study right now, but we need to start talking about what does that mean and how does that affect that 4% of the, of the budget.
So if it goes up, the money goes up, as you said.
Right.
So, and that's not net school spending eligible.
That's correct.
So, I mean, it's complicated, I think, for people to understand.
So more education dollars, really, but not net school spending eligible, right?
Correct. And it's not, by law, we cannot spend something on not net school spending eligible items just because we feel like it. So I think it, I think somebody else might have said, like, "We've got a lot of money, and what are we doing with it?" We can't do anything with it other than direct services at 100%. And I think that's a good point to make, that we can't, just because we're getting this other money, we just can't say, "Okay, we feel bad for the city, we'll let you do this or that." It's not like that.
You can use maintenance items, but they can't be extraordinary. So you're limited to even the maintenance items.
My last question is on the transportation in the current year. Do you know what, where we're at now? We're going to have to have more money come off of the?
It's my understanding with discussion with Mr. Almeida that we'll be at about the $9 million that was budgeted.
You agree with that?
So, so the other night, I said it was, it was going to be about $200,000 over. That gets us to about the 9 million, 9.91 roughly.
Right. And I think in our budget, it was 8.4 because we low, we, we underfunded the budget at some point in the discussion with the city on the 450,000 issue. So I want to say that we went at 9 million.
We're, we're at 8, we're at 8.9, but we have $185,000 in the budget set aside to cover the 200,000. So we're in the ballpark.
So we're not 200,000 in the?
We have 185 that we set aside at the beginning of the year. That's in contracted services to cover the remaining 200,000.
But it's going to be paid for transportation?
Yes.
But right now, it's not in transportation?
No.
So it's going from a net school spending eligible line to a non-net school spending eligible line?
Correct.
So therefore, you're 200,000 short on net school spending again?
Correct.
You know that?
I didn't know that.
So, it's just?
But net school spending, you know, we're, we're talking about this again, but we don't know what net school spending is until the end of the year report and the final healthcare bill comes in and the final retirement bill comes in. We don't know what net school spending is going to be. So we're back and forth with 100%, 101%, 100.4%, 98%, 99.9%. It really, you don't know what it's going to be. Our best estimate at the beginning of any fiscal year is based on some numbers that are really significant. So when we're looking at $20 million for health insurance, if it comes in at 20 million one, then wow, we were over net school spending. If it comes in at 19 million or 18 million, which is what we're experiencing this year, we're under net school spending. So we don't know. So it's your, it's our best estimate. We work with Kevin on a regular basis to determine what that estimate's going to be at every year at this time in the April, May timeframe. And we start with the premise that we're at 101% or at 100%.
Right now, you, everybody knows we're only at 100. So they take their healthcare out. You want to get to the 100. The mayor wants to get to 100. Everybody wants to at least spend that.
So that's the additional transfer for us that?
So I'm glad we got out today that you're 200,000 more in the hole. So you got to get to that number as well, in my opinion. But while we're talking about this, the other thing is, the school committee doesn't have opportunities because we're not on the city side. So we couldn't say, for instance, that we're going to take a half a million dollars, a million dollars of this money, and put it into our own school department rainy day fund or whatever the wording is. We don't have that authority, sort of like a charter school does or other things. So we, or can we? I don't think that we can use bank money. Do you want to say something?
You can't.
We'd have to establish, we'd agree. So, so we have the opportunity, if we have a good fiscal, financial year, that we have the opportunity, through the school committee, through the city council, to establish what's called a stable, essentially a sped stabilization account. So you can set up a sped reserve, essentially where you set aside a certain amount, a certain dollar amount. It could be like 2% of your budget, up to like 2% of your budget that you could set aside. And so that you could use that if the circumstance comes up where you have very high sped, you know, tuition years or whatever the case may be, to offset, you know, a budget and a certain tough budget.
So it's sort of similar to prepaying sped, just in a, more of an account?
You set it up in an account, you leave the money in an account that you're able to use in future years.
And we can't use, we can't set one of those up for any other reason?
No.
So it's just limited, it just answers the question of what do we do with all this money that come in last minute? We work together to try and come up with the best plan. So I appreciate your candor. I appreciate the support of the council and the mayor. We're all trying to, the goal is the same. We want a better education for our kids. So I think this was a productive meeting personally, and I look forward to the next one. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Chair. All services. Thank you. Mr. Corey.
I just want to make remarks to the council that I was very much in favor of the budget that the superintendent proposed and that the school committee approved on Monday night. My big concern was with transportation. I couldn't go with it. I just couldn't understand the trajectory of the price rise, the hike, from last year to this year. It just didn't make any sense to me overall. And at the same time, we have a responsibility to transport kids safely. But I think, I wonder about these private contractors that have us right in the palm of their hands. And, and so I have to consider, like, what, what councillor in C7 reiterated earlier before, do we throw out the bids and start, start a rebid process? I'm open to all suggestions. I'm new to this. This is my first, first real budget experience. And like I said, I'm very pleased with the school department budget overall. It's the transportation item that really alarms me. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Okay. I don't think there's any other questions at this time. Is there, is there a adjournment from the council? Or is there further questions? Councilman C7?
Take it easy. What would be the process to throw the bids out? Would it have to come through the school board first or?
Right now, it's in the jurisdiction of the school department and the, and the school committee. It has not made it to the city council for its vote or ratification at this point. So it is not before us for discussion or a vote at this point. You would have the opportunity, when we have our budget vote, when we do the appropriation order, to vote on the school department budget. And I believe there's a different, a separate line item for school. But I just wanted to.
All right. Well, you know, you seem to see a little support. Go out for bids again, and, you know, I would recommend that we probably should do it. To Mr. Pacheco, how long is the process if you throw the bids out?
60 days. And the only thing I, I would like to add to this, because unfortunately, I'm still a firm believer that the bids are going to come in higher, but let's just say that I'm wrong. I've been wrong before. So I think the other thing that we're not considering is the fact that they don't make buses overnight. So all of these companies who are waiting for a contract are not going to order buses because they're not going to take a chance of ordering a bus that they're not going to be able to pay for. So let's just say that a company, Company A, needs to order 14 buses, and we take another 60 days. Those buses may not be in the queue. They may. Maybe the bus company does enough work with a particular vendor, and those buses are going to be in the queue. So the only reluctant, I would, reluctance I would have, besides the way I feel about rebidding, is the fact that a bus company may not bid, knowing 60 days from now, or a little longer, depending on when we could have meetings, that that bid would be, you know, reacted, reactivated and then finally awarded. That's just one thing I'd like to add. And I'm not saying that these companies couldn't pull it off. All I'm saying is, is that I don't know. I don't, the, the process of ordering buses, like a lot of other vehicles, you, you go to a vendor, a particular vendor today, that's on the state bid list, and you're waiting for a pickup truck with a plow on it and maybe a couple of other accessories to be put together for 16 weeks. 16 weeks from the day you order it is when you're getting that vehicle. This is a little bigger situation, and I'm sure all of these bus companies are doing exactly what we're doing. All these other contracts that's been approved this year are doing exactly what we're trying to do, is renew contracts, and some companies are trying to get new buses out of the contract. So that's my reluctance. But to answer your question with that long-winded other stuff, probably 60 days.
60 days. Well, you know, you have to leave it up to you guys, school committee, whatever you want to do. Why is it this year that they got to buy buses? I mean, is the contract all done? Would you have a five-year contract?
So councillor, they, they had five years. This was, this is the final year of the contract. But the way that we put the bids out, and when I was answering councillor Leboeau about the routing and all, all of that, those issues, in order to tier buses, we need a company that's doing the same work in all the schools to allow me to do that tiering. So Company A that bid on this may have been doing different work for us. They won this bid, and they may not have 29-passenger buses with wheelchair capability. They may not have enough 44-passenger buses. So a company who's bidding on this is bidding their, their particular number based on the fact they're going to need to buy 14 buses this year in order to accommodate the bid. And they are going to have five years to pay that, that loan off. So that's why some companies don't have buying buses. It's not as much the age piece as it is the fact that they may not have in their fleet the appropriate amount of buses needed to fulfill the obligation of the contract.
All right. I guess it's up to the school committee to decide what they want to do. I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. There's two councillors who want to speak. Councillor in C2, councillor Lacadine.
Thank you, sir. Just real quick. Mr. Pacheco, isn't the reason that the bus, the cost of the contracts increased because the bids, the requirements that were in the bids?
15% or 16, close to 16 and a half percent was items that we don't have control over, federal and state. So half of the, of the cost hike. The other half of the cost hike is exactly what the mayor said. These companies are buying buses, and they need fi, and they, they're going to use this contract, five years' worth of this contract, to pay for those buses. They may not buy them all the first year, but they are going to buy them in the course of this contract, those new buses, and paying for those buses.
What about the additional?
And the cam, the cameras are a small amount. Yeah, the, the cameras are not a, maybe $2,900 per bus.
Not a big dollar ticket.
It's not, it's, it's not adding up to this.
Actually, the buses, if they put cameras on the outside, it might save them insurance money because they're way too?
It's five buses, so that's the option. Any new buses would come through with five.
All right. That I yield. Thank you.
Councillor in C1, councillor Lacadine.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco, in terms of the specifications that you've put out, are there, all the specifications that you're requiring, are they immediate for year one, or are you phasing it over the five-year contract?
The only one I think, and, and I would have to check to be sure, is the new buses with the five cameras. So outside cameras and inside cameras. I think that's the only one that allows it to be done over time. The rest of the, the rest of the items would be immediate. So the, the small increase in the liability, which we already reduced from the initial bid, we brought that one back a bit. That one would take place immediately, and the three cameras per bus would take care, and the GPS would take care of immediately.
So my, my other question was, or is, is it more beneficial to go out for a one-year contract, try to see where those costs are, and then immediately go out for a five-year contract, allowing the vendors to do a little bit more due diligence on their, on their side? Because obviously, they'll have more time for planning and things of that nature to really kind of get the cost down. Because I know you have 60 days. I mean, you could probably do 30 days, but then they'll be rushing it. And so anytime you've got vendors that are coming in trying to bid in, in that short window, they're just going to add a mock-up to make sure that they're not losing any money. So it may just be advantageous to, you know, and I'm just throwing this out as a suggestion, doing a one-year contract for these services and then immediately going out for a five-year contract.
I think the only, the only issue that the contractors would have would be that they would not be able to purchase the buses, not knowing whether or not they were going to be able to be successful in a five-year contract. So if I'm, if I need 14 buses to bid on this particular item, the one-year contract's not going to allow me to make that price cheap enough to win the bid.
Yeah. But you had just mentioned that they may not be purchasing all the buses. So if we do a situation where you just, I don't know what the, I don't know what the specifications look like, but if there is a way to, whatever specifications you're requiring, just push it off a year and, and get that number down to try to minimize the , the cost impact.
Yeah. I think that the way, the option, the only option with the one year would be that we leave things exactly the way they are. be that we leave things exactly the way they are. So, we, we take a look at the, at the bus contract that just finished, with the exception of the Tremblay contract, which is fine. We take all the rest of the contracts, all the rest of the routes, put them exactly back into the package, and they bid them exactly the way they bid for the one year, which would mean there'd be no savings.
Right.
On, you know, there would be no tiering available or anything like that. And then, the five-year contract would come into play after that. That's the only way I think we could put it out for one year, and be sure that the companies would not have to buy additional equipment.
Right, okay.
I yield. Thank you, councillor on Seat Six, councillor Long.
Just a couple of quick questions. On the expiring contracts, how many vendors are involved in the expiring contracts?
There are five large contractors, and there are two smaller contractors that do small work.
So, you've got five large contractors who would be doing the...
Right.
How many contractors in the specifications?
Four. In the current, the one that just went out for bid?
The one that we just got to bid.
So, we would be starting with one less contract.
So, we're eliminating a contractor?
One contractor would be eliminated by virtue of...
All right, so what's the average number of buses that each contractor had on routes?
It's not broken up that way, but I think the smallest number is in the 30s.
All right, so when you did this, did we look at the capacity of the other vendors to be able to pick it up? Because it seems like all of a sudden, you've got a bunch of these vendors that don't have enough buses, which doesn't make any sense to me, but...
Well, they don't have enough buses, because basically, the way the routes were laid out, they were all doing different portions. So, for instance, bus company A was doing a small route at Watson, a larger route at CUS, another half route at somewhere else. So, their buses were, they bought buses the last time. So, the five-year contract, they were, they had to buy buses. Most of these companies didn't have that. So, it was all done exactly what we're trying to do now. The difference is, to move forward, we can't move forward if we're going to continue to have five or six bus companies doing what they want to do only, and not having the ability to do any kind of tiering or any kind of cost savings. If that's, if that's the will, then we went from $4 million to $9 million in five years. So...
And the life, the life of these buses is five years?
No, it's 10, 10, 12.
So, they're looking to pay off their buses in five years? So, that means if we renew a contract?
No, they're buying buses.
We'll get it for half the price next time, because they already have the buses.
I agree with you, however, I don't think that's going to happen.
Well, put that in the contract. Why can't you put that in the contract? It's like, okay, if we're going to pay for it up in the five years, we're going to have the ability to renew it at much less of a rate.
I like the way you think, councillor, but I don't think that that's going to be something we can put in writing.
No, I just think it's kind of crazy we're going to be paying. These buses can't be cheap.
$88,000 for the logic.
Yeah, I know, that's, that's a lot of money, you know? And we're going to pay for it, and they're going to get to use it for the next five years. That's, that doesn't make any sense to me. So, maybe we should go to the private buses and buy them. That I yield.
Thank you, councillor on Seat Three, councillor LeBeau.
Just quickly, you know, I think there's a tendency sometimes as councillors, that we like to interject and become administrators, or in this case, we're projecting and maybe want to become school committee members. I have full confidence in the administrative team that's here today, and the school committee that's here today. What's most disturbing to me sometimes is, we leave a meeting, and then we read it the next day in the newspaper, or listen on the radio, that the councillors wanted you to throw out the bids. Just because that happened to be the squeaky wheel, I don't, I don't want that to be understood to be the position of the council. My position is that you are capable to do this job. We've worked long together when you were on the city side, now you're on the school department side, they're lucky to have you. I think that you should make the decision that you think is right, in conjunction with your policymaking body, the school committee, and Mr. Almeida, Dr. Malone. And I wouldn't want anything to be misconstrued, that somehow because some have said something, that that's the position of the council. It's not our jurisdiction, it's yours, it's the school committees', and we ought to stay